Okay, thank you. Please be seated. Okay, colleagues, welcome to the 18th meeting of municipal council. I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishnaabik, Hodinshoni, Leni-Pewak and Atawandron peoples. We honor and respect the history, languages and cultures of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area, the two-row Wampum Belt Treaty of the Hodinshoni Confederacy, Silver Covenant Chain, Beaver Hunting Grounds of the Hodinshoni-Nanfan Treaty of 1701, McKee Treaty of 1790, London Township Treaty of 1796, and the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishnaabik, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Anishnaabik and Hodinshoni. Three indigenous nations that are neighbors of the city of London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Mutsi Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures and customs. The city of London is also committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, you can contact council agenda at london.ca or 519 661 2489, extension 2425. All right, next I get to introduce our national anthem singer and performer. Country singer-songwriter Amanda Keels is a Canadian artist from London, Ontario. She is a two-time winner of the Canadian Open Singing Songwriting Contest. Her heartfelt lyrics and stage performances captured audiences throughout her musical journey. She has performed on countless stages across Canada from piano, lounges, festivals and country bars. Please rise and join me in welcoming Amanda, who will now perform the national anthem for us.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love, in all of us connect. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, our true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on God for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on God for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on God for thee. Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to disclosures of pecuniary interest. I'll look for colleagues who have any disclosures for us today. Okay, seeing none, that brings us to recognitions. There are four, although one's just a comment. Today's councillor Ramon's birthday, so happy birthday to councillor Ramon. People always clap for your birthday, but you should actually be clapping for councillor Ramon's parents, who basically determined that date for her. But I hope you have a great day. Hopefully it's a smooth and quick meeting for you, and you can get out and do some fun things with the family. So everybody just keep a note that if you talk short and you're quick to your points, that's for councillor Ramon today. I have recognitions for a couple of individuals. I'm going to start with Deputy Mayor Lewis, and then I'm going to go to councillor Trosau, and then I'm going to do one.
Thank you, worship. Colleagues, today, I'm rising and asking council to pause to recognize the passing of Martin Withenshaw, a true community leader and a man whose impact on London will be felt for many generations in our community. Martin was many things to many people: a successful small business owner, a passionate advocate, a creative force and a fearless champion for inclusivity. But above all, he was somebody who believed deeply in building a stronger, more welcoming London for everyone. When Martin arrived in our city more than 40 years ago, London was not the inclusive community we strive to be today. And he fought tirelessly to change that. Through his leadership with Pride London, where he eventually served as president, as a founding member of the Rainbow Optimist Club, the first LGBTQ+ optimist club in the world, he pushed boundaries and opened doors that had long been closed to gay, lesbian, bi and transgendered and two-spirited individuals. His appointment in 2019 as the Pride Festival's Grand Marshall for the parade was a moment of immense pride for him, but also a testament to how far our community has come. Many knew Martin for his contributions to our local business community, whether through his work in the restaurant industry or as the owner of much-loved Withenshaws Cheese Shop. His entrepreneurial spirit and dedication to service earned him numerous accolades, including the Chamber of Commerce President Award and the Small Business Achievement Award, as well as the Queen Elizabeth II Diamond Jubilee Medal. Martin was colorful, he was bold, he was unafraid to stand up for what he believed in. He was provocative, but with a purpose, and he was driven by a vision of belonging and love, and he showed us that one person with courage and conviction can make lasting change. So on behalf of council, I want to extend our heartfelt condolences to his husband, Tom, to his family and the many friends and community members grieving his loss. London is a better and more compassionate city because of Martin. His legacy lives on in the communities he strengthened, the barriers he helped dismantle and the countless lives he touched, including my own. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trosau.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to present this recognition of Barry Allen Wells. Barry Wells passed away on November 4th in the ICU at University Hospital. He was the son of Don and Darlene, and is survived by his brother Daryl and son Adam. Interment was at Mount Pleasant Seminary, besides his mom, who, like Barry, was a longtime resident of the Cherry Hill apartment complex. Many of his friends are paying tribute to his contributions to London in the wake of his death at the age of 71. Wells had written that he moved to London as a child in 1965, grew up in the Old South, and that he attended Wortley Public School and graduated in 1972 from South Collegiate. He wrote for The Scene Magazine, I don't know how many of you remember The Scene Magazine, but he was the editor for a while, and he also wrote under the pseudonym of Butch McLarty. I don't know how many of you remember Butch, who was rather a serbic character, to say the least. He was a friend, but also, from time to time, a thorn in the side of some of the municipal politicians in his critiques, his biting and blazing critiques of City Hall. He was at the forefront of pushing for more open, transparent local government. But one role stands out for all of the others. He was among the most passionate boosters of the city's historic Lebat Park, where, with his sunglasses, hat and moustache, he became part of the ballpark's well-recognized scenery. He was an avid Majors fan, and he researched the senior inter-county baseball league history for the London Majors Alumni Association. He co-founded Friends of Lebat Park and was successful in having the park declared a provincial heritage site and officially recognized as the oldest ballpark in the world. In 2006, he was finally recognized on the Mayor's Honors List for the Heritage category. He worked diligently to have the park designated under the Heritage Act and get the city to place a plaque on the park. He also worked tirelessly to get the ballpark's Ron McKay Clubhouse restored.
First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Mutsi Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures, and customs. The City of London is also committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, you can contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. All right, next I get to introduce our National Anthem singer and performer. Country singer-songwriter Amanda Keels is a Canadian artist from London, Ontario. She is a two-time winner of the Canadian Open Singing Songwriting Contest. Her heartfelt lyrics and stage performances captured audiences throughout her musical journey. She has performed on countless stages across Canada from piano, lounges, festivals, and country bars. Please rise and join me in welcoming Amanda, who will now perform the National Anthem for us.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to disclosures of pecuniary interest. I'll look for colleagues who have any disclosures for us today. Okay, seeing none, that brings us to recognitions. There are four, although one's just a comment. Today's Council Ramon's birthday, so happy birthday to Council Ramon. People always clap for your birthday, but you should actually be clapping for Council Ramon's parents, who basically determined that date for her. But I hope you have a great day. Hopefully, it's a smooth and quick meeting for you. You can get out and do some fun things with the family. So everybody, just keep a note that if you talk short and you're quick to your points, that's for Council Ramon today. I have recognitions for a couple of individuals. I'm going to start with Deputy Mayor Lewis, and then I'm going to go to Counsel Trosaw, and then I'm going to do one.
Thank you, worship. Colleagues, today, I'm rising and asking Council to pause to recognize the passing of Martin Withenshaw, a true community leader and a man whose impact on London will be felt for many generations in our community. Martin was many things to many people: a successful small-business owner, a passionate advocate, a creative force, and a fearless champion for inclusivity. But above all, he was somebody who believed deeply in building a stronger, more welcoming London for everyone. When Martin arrived in our city more than 40 years ago, London was not the inclusive community we strive to be today. And he fought tirelessly to change that. Through his leadership with Pride London, where he eventually served as president, as a founding member of the Rainbow Optimist Club, the first LGBTQ+ optimist club in the world, he pushed boundaries and opened doors that had long been closed to gay, lesbian, bi, and transgendered and two-spirited individuals. His appointment in 2019 as the Pride Festival's Grand Marshall for the parade was a moment of immense pride for him, but also a testament to how far our community has come. Many knew Martin for his contributions to our local business community, whether through his work in the restaurant industry or as the owner of much-loved Withenshaw's Cheese Shop. His entrepreneurial spirit and dedication to service earned him numerous accolades, including the Chamber of Commerce President Award and the Small Business Achievement Award, as well as the Queen Elizabeth II Diamond Jubilee Medal. Martin was colorful. He was bold. He was unafraid to stand up for what he believed in. He was provocative, but with a purpose. And he was driven by a vision of belonging and love. And he showed us that one person with courage and conviction can make lasting change. So on behalf of Council, I want to extend our heartfelt condolences to his husband, Tom, to his family, and the many friends and community members grieving his loss. London is a better and more compassionate city because of Martin. His legacy lives on in the communities he strengthened, the barriers he helped dismantle, and the countless lives he touched, including my own. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Trosaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to present this recognition of Barry Allen Wells. Barry Wells passed away on November 4th in the ICU at University Hospital. He was the son of Don and Darlene and is survived by his brother Daryl and son Adam. Interment was at Mount Pleasant Seminary besides his mom, who, like Barry, was a longtime resident of the Cherry Hill apartment complex. Many of his friends are paying tribute to his contributions to London in the wake of his death at the age of 71. Wells had written that he moved to London as a child in 1965, grew up in the Old South, and that he attended Wortley Public School and graduated in 1972 from South Collegiate. He wrote for The Scene Magazine. I don't know how many of you remember The Scene Magazine, but he was the editor for a while. And he also wrote under the pseudonym of Butch McCarty. I don't know how many of you remember Butch, who was rather a serbic character, to say the least. He was a friend, but also, from time to time, a thorn in the side of some of the municipal politicians in his critiques, his biting and blazing critiques of City Hall. He was at the forefront of pushing for more open, transparent local government. But one role stands out for all of the others. He was among the most passionate boosters of the city's historic Lebat Park, where, with his sunglasses, hat, and mustache, he became part of the ballpark's well-recognized scenery. He was an avid majors fan, and he researched the senior inter-county baseball league history for the London Majors Alumni Association. He co-founded Friends of Lebat Park and was successful in having the park declared a provincial heritage site and officially recognized as the oldest ballpark in the world. In 2006, he was finally recognized on the Mayor's Honors List for the heritage category. He worked diligently to have the park designated under the Heritage Act and get the city to place a plaque on the park. He also worked tirelessly to get the ballpark's Ron McKay Clubhouse restored. Wells was recognized by his heritage efforts in 2006. More recently, in 2023, the Friends of Lebat Park with Tourism London were honored with the London Heritage Award for Lebat Park Tours that included documentation of Barry's many contributions. His archival materials provided much of the context for the park's storyboards. So Barry knew how City Hall operated, and he was a constant presence here. He knew how to get his voice heard in standing committees and advisory committees and boards and commissions. He would constantly hold politicians' feet to the fire. He often sort of presented his critical work through the now-defunct Scene Magazine and his own website, Alt London. He became known, to many of you, by a second name, Butch McCarty. An alter ego he created as a tongue-in-cheek blend of politician and critic, a persona that he used to speak out on issues. He ran a regular column, Butch ran a regular column in The Scene, which Wells helped edit. I remember in my early days in London, I took strong issue with something Butch had written. Can you imagine that? So I complained to the editor about Butch. Barry's response was, "Butch is an a-hole." And that had me fooled for many years. I was always looking forward to running into Butch, but I never did. At some point, somebody explained the joke to me. He always had a way of extending his personality through Butch and having lots of fun with it. He was also active in the taxi industry, and he worked on a unionization campaign to improve the working conditions for local drivers. He had briefly worked as a cab driver himself. So finally, Barry Wells always liked to raise awareness of causes and things where he didn't think people were being treated well. He had the unique ability to combine hard-hitting political commentary with humor, irony, and wit. He will be sorely missed.
Thanks to you both. And I will say, just personally, I did know Marty, as I called him, and many called him, and Barry. I knew Butch as well. I liked him a little less than Barry. But great individuals in our city who accomplished a great deal. And with that, I rise with a recognition as well, because today we also paused to honor the life and legacy of William Bill Brady, broadcaster, journalist, a community leader, and one of the most recognizable voices in London. His passing on November 16th, 2025, at the age of 94, marks the end of an era, because for generations, he was a trusted companion at the breakfast table, a storyteller with unmatched wit, and a devoted advocate for the city he loved. Bill's contributions reached far beyond the airwaves. As Chair of the University Hospital Board, a dedicated volunteer and champion for healthcare and charitable causes, he lived a life rooted in service. His leadership and community commitment were recognized with an honorary doctorate from Western University and his appointment as a Member of the Order of Canada. In 2024, Bill was recognized by the City of London for his contributions by being named to the Mayor's Honors List. On behalf of Council, we extend our heartfelt condolences to the entire Brady family. London is better because of Bill Brady. He was part of it. His voice may be silent, but the impact of his kindness, humor, and dedication will continue to resonate throughout our community for generations to come. Thank you. All right, any other recognitions? Okay, seeing none, then we're on to the business of Council. Reviewing of confidential matters to be considered in public, there are none. Council in closed session. We have six items for our closed session today. I'll look for a motion to go into closed session. Counsel Van Meerebruggen, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. Any discussion on going into closed session? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Counsel Trosaw?
Trosaw votes yes.
Noted, closing the vote. Motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, colleagues, we'll be moving to Committee Room 5, so I will see you there. For the public, we'll return
Mayor Brigan, seconded by Councilor Ferreira. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, we have a couple of pieces of communication on the agenda and the added agenda. Six point one, six point two, those both relate to different components of the agenda before us today. So I have a motion prepared to refer both those to those items in the committee reports. I'll look for a mover of that. Councilor McAllister, seconded by Councilor Cuddy. Any discussion on referring those? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
All right, no motions to which notice was given, we have none, which means we're on to reports. Eight point one is the seventeenth report of the Community Protective Services Committee, and I'll turn it over to the chair to present that report.
Thank you, Mayor. Pleased to present the seventeenth report of the Community Protective Services Committee. I have some poll requests. I have item number six, that's the city's response to MTO annual electric scooter, or kick scooter pilot extension, pulled by Councilor Ramon. I have item eight, that's the approval of service agreement with the Gilzeans Creek Housing Cooperative, Inc., that's pulled by Councilor Stevenson. I have item ten, pulled by Councilor Stevenson, that's the housing collaborative initiative, updated financials and project inclusion. And then I have item eleven, the Lambeth Neighborhood Connectivity Plan. My vice chair told me this one was pulled as well. I don't know who exactly pulled that out, Councilor Hopkins, and those are the only poll requests I have.
Okay, you can add nine and thirteen from me. And is there anybody who would like anything else? Okay, I'll let you make a motion then.
All right, I'll move one through five, seven and twelve and fourteen.
Okay, that's on the floor. Any discussion on those items that are on the floor, one through five, seven, nine, oh, sorry, seven, twelve and fourteen? Yeah, go ahead, Councilor McAllister.
Thank you, through the mayor. I'll be quick on this, just with relation to twelve and fourteen. I want to thank committee for their support on that. It was particularly problematic summer in terms of rodents. I think this is something with residential dumpsters we need to look into. Appreciate bylaw, some willingness to review and see if there's any updates we can make to that. And with regards to item fourteen, again, I appreciate the support on this. Already received feedback from the public, which is great. I know we'll engage with local veterans organizations and veterans themselves. And I think having these veteran public art displays throughout the city is an excellent way to acknowledge their service, and I think you'll get a lot of input from the public about it. So thank you for the support on that, and I look forward, hopefully, for the support of council as well. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on all of these items? All right, then we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I will put item six, that's the city's response to the MTO annual electric kick scooter pilot extension as relates to bill number four zero five, I'll put that on the floor.
Okay, that is on the floor. I'll look for speakers. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship, so I won't be supporting this. I think that there's been more than enough time to gather some data, engage and look at enforcement challenges. I think it's time that the province, if they want to recognize e-scooters as mode of transportation, it's time to start regulating. I get a ton of complaints about these things, lack of helmets, lack of respect for the people that they should be sharing the road with, the lack of insurance and licensing regime. And that's not on us, that's on the MTO. So I'm not going to continue to tacitly endorse these modes of transportation without the province taking serious steps now on safety, insurance and licensing. These need to be regulated, they're a motorized vehicle, electric though it may be, they need to be regulated. And so frankly, I'm done with piloting. It's time, from my perspective, for the province to step up and regulate.
Go ahead, Councilor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you, so I share the same sentiment. I think that at this point, the onus is on residents to report a scooter that they saw flying by them at usually a high rate of speed with no way to differentiate one from the other. And when residents in my ward have tried to complain about e-scooters, they were told to follow the e-scooter home to the residential address, try to figure out whose house it is in order to file the complaint. That is far too high of an onus. And even when they were reported, the ability to and the process by which to figure out how to get these dealt with was cumbersome and difficult for them. So I do think that at this point, these are, we've learned from this pilot, we know that these are not as effective as they can be and as beneficial. And perhaps, I think, part of the challenge is it's the end user. It's the fact that, in my ward, for instance, we're seeing a lot of users that are under the age of sixteen. We're seeing a lot of violations with helmets not being worn, and we're seeing them used on streets and street classifications that they're not supposed to be on. So all of those things, I appreciate the opportunity, I've had to discuss these issues with staff, but I do believe that they're overly burdensome on the system, and therefore, we should end our relationship and pilot with these right now.
Thank you, I have Councilor Stevenson next.
Thank you, I agree with my colleagues, and I'm just wondering through you to staff what the implications are if we were to end the pilot now.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the pilot were not, this were not extended, we would withdraw our participation from the provincial program, and these would become unusable on all City of London facility and streets for all ages. Right now, this is the only way that personal ownership, e-scooters are permitted on certain roads in the city. And if we no longer are part of the pilot, then there would be no legislation governing their use in London. They would simply be, as they were before, not permitted.
Thank you very much, that's all.
All right, I have Councilor Frank and then Councilor Trossow.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple questions in regards to the motion. So given that the motion is drafted in this way, I'm just wondering if the cargo power assisted bikes get caught up in this as well, or if it's just the e-scooter pilot? I'm a little bit confused with the language.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you please provide clarification as to what you're asking?
Go ahead, Councilor Frank.
Sure, yes. So are cargo power assisted bicycles going to get caught up in this? If we vote no or yes on this, are they included in this motion? Or is this just e-bike, or, I'm sorry, e-scooters?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this would apply to both types of vehicles unless it were split out and changed by amendment to the motion that's here. Right now, the pilot encompasses both the cargo assisted, power assisted cargo bikes as well as the e-scooters. Clearly, council could pick different directions on those two vehicle types, should you choose.
Go ahead, Councilor Frank.
Thank you, yes. So I don't want to support this at all. I think it's a horrible direction that we're heading in. I think that there are many residents I have that use kick scooters and cargo power assisted bicycles. And I think banning them as of tonight and telling them they can't use their forms of transportation that they've been using to get around the city is frankly, like horrible. When people spend thousands of dollars, especially on cargo power assisted bicycles, to be able to choose that as their method of transportation. And especially in regards to the kick scooters, I understand folks don't want people under sixteen using them inappropriately, but I'm not going to tell a twenty-five-year-old that's following the rules of the road they can't use it when a lot of people are actually using these to get to work and to school. So I will not be supporting this. That being said, I would like to amend it, in case it does pass, to try and separate this because I think that there are very different concerns, and I don't want cargo power assisted bicycles to get caught up in this as well.
So, Councilor, if you would like to amend it and pull them apart, the appropriate way to do that would be to refer it back to committee with the direction to separate the two because there's a bylaw associated with it that we cannot disentangle. the two, because there's a bylaw associated with it that we cannot disentangle at council tonight, we wouldn't have two alternate bylaws to vote on, so, if that's your desire, your desire is not to just, I mean, you could vote against, yeah, if you want to do what you want to do, you got to refer it back, with the direction to take those two pieces apart.
Thank you, then, I'd like to refer it back, I also think the community deserves an opportunity to provide input on this direction before we make any of these substantive and financially impactful decisions, so I'd like to refer it back with that direction.
A point of order, I was under the impression that this was to extend the pilot for one year, not to get rid of it, so if you're voting against it, it would be to get rid of it, but this is, what committee approved was to extend the pilot.
Correct, what I'm hearing is a desire from council to extend part of it, but not the other piece, the only way for me to allow counselors to make a decision on that is to recommend or refer it back, because we can't tear it apart. I certainly recognize what you're saying, if you're for all of it, there's a very easy path forward, but if your desire is to support part of it but not the other piece, which I feel is in order for a counselor to want to do, given the differences between the types of vehicles, the only path that I can offer is a referral back to committee to pull that apart, even though the committee made an affirmative recommendation to continue the pilot, I'm going to say that the referral is in order to allow colleagues to actually separate the two. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, this is a point of order as well, and maybe addresses part of Council Frank's desire to split them, but in the executive summary of the staff report, it actually says the draft amending bylaw will also remove reference to cargo power assisted bicycles on March 1, 2026, the province's power cargo assisted bicycle pilot program ends on March 1, 2026. To date, no personal or commercial use cargo powered assisted bicycles are in use in London. So, with that in the executive summary, I'm not sure why we need to split them apart, because the executive summary indicates that it's not part of it moving forward.
Got it, I hear you, so that's a point of order on why, I have to go back to Ms. Scher, who's, I'm making the decision based on the response to the question she just gave about them being entangled together, so I'll go back, and you understand where our dilemma is, so if you could clarify, is it actually tied up in this or not?
The answer is, Your Worship, is yes, it is technically tied up, and there are two categories of cargo bikes that are available for use in London, one is under a certain weight and size, and it is actually not applied, this doesn't apply here, it's exactly the same as it would be for any other e-assist bike. There is a larger size that is part of this bylaw that require, that is ending, that pilot for the province ends in March. Both of those, both vehicle types would cease to be legal to use in London, should this not, the committee's recommendation not pass, but as noted in the executive summary correctly, we are not aware of any personal or commercial use of the larger type of cargo bike that would be impacted. If anyone's entertaining that larger type of e-assist cargo bike, they would not be permitted, the smaller versions that people use as people movers, or some small businesses are using, remain legal as long as they're under the size, and both types of vehicles would no longer be allowed for use in the city effective council's decision.
Okay, so, I think that addresses the point of order for me, that there is a piece here that is tied in, maybe slightly different than the regular, just electric assisted bikes, there's a larger piece that is tied in, I'm going to go back to Council Frank, who was moving the amendment, which I said was in order, and is seconded by Council Farah. Go ahead, Council Frank.
Thank you, I still would like to refer it, I understand that now better, thank you very much, I appreciate that clarification, makes me like 1% less worried. That being said, I don't think the general public is aware that, as of today, we're discussing them not using electric kick scooters in the city, and I don't think that's fair to people who are using them to get to work and to school, to just wake up tomorrow and now it be illegal, so I would like to refer this back so that we can actually have some community consultation, so the community understands the impact of this decision if we were to approve this today.
Just give me one second before I build a speaker's. Okay, so we're not going to have any debate until I actually get the wording of the motion done, because what you said before and what you're saying now about a community consultation piece, we might need to, we might want to give a little bit of direction to civic administration on what that means, unless your intent is for the committee to figure out what that means, you just want to refer it back for the option to pull it apart, and have the committee figure out what community consultation you want to do, like there could be a discussion there, or you're going to direct some type of community consultation now, so I just want to get what you're going for, so we can make sure that the language is right, because this is council, so it'll be definitive once we pass it.
Thank you, I'm happy if staff have better language, but I would want at least a PPM and a survey.
So, I'm going to read this in a sec, but I'm going to tell you what is the allowable motion and what is not, so the allowable motion is, this is referral back with direction, so we're not going to direct that a PPM actually happened, we're going to refer it back so that staff can report to the committee on separating the different classifications of vehicles, and a plan to engage with the public, including but not limited to the two suggestions that you mentioned. That would be a referral motion that we could do, but we can't, we're not going to direct an actual PPM as part of a referral, okay, so, because it was referred back to make decisions on it. So, I'm going to read that out in one second. Okay, that the, oh, go ahead, Ms. Scher.
Sorry, if I may, Your Worship, I will also just add to the conversation that any time that is taken to do this work, the bylaw that currently enables the use of these types of vehicles on our roads expires on November 27, there would be a period in between the termination of the existing bylaw and the extension of the pilot program, and a decision to either proceed with an extended pilot or not in the future, where the use of these vehicles is technically not permitted on our roadways.
Okay, I'm going to need a second with that one. Okay, I'm going to read out the referral, but just, the information that was provided was basically, there'll be a policy gap because the bylaw expires. Go ahead, Ms. Scher.
Your Worship, that is correct, if I may suggest, what you may wish to entertain, if you do not wish to create a gap where these vehicles are not regulated because there's no extension and we're doing additional work, would be to extend it for a period of less than a year, which would allow them to continue in their current form while we do that engagement consultation, and then bring this back for further consideration by council at that time. So, I would imagine to do this through the holidays, have those conversations early in the new year, we probably would need about four months, six would be great, but four would certainly be helpful, and then all current rules would remain in place during that lesser extension, we could report back with some of those options and the results of engagement at that time, council could then decide if they wish to extend further, or if they would wish to end their participation in the pilot project.
I'm just, so colleagues know, I'm having the clerics review the bylaw to see if the timeframe is within the bylaw, because the direction for the timeframe is within the motion, if it's not in the bylaw and it's linked just to the motion, what I'm going to suggest is, you could amend the motion rather than refer the whole thing, but let me just double check to make sure it's not in the bylaw. Yes.
Sorry, trying to be helpful, might not be helpful, realizing we're meeting again tomorrow for a different council meeting, would referring this to council tomorrow give opportunity to pull apart those bylaws on this one item? I know it's supposed to just be budget, but just trying to set it here.
Yeah, so, I can, it's a special meeting, and the agenda's been posted, so I can't add something unrelated to it, but I'm, we're very close to having a very easy solution here, so that people can make the decisions they want to make, whether they want to extend it or not. So, good news, there's only one reference to the date in the entire bylaw, and there's one reference of the date in the motion, there is a referral that was put on the floor, a referral can stand, I haven't actually finalized the language, so I'm not saying that it's on the floor yet, because I haven't got you to do that, so if you don't want to make the referral, which would guarantee a policy gap, you got to amend the motion in Part A to change the for one year, and the November 26, then the, basically the end of the pilot by November 26, 2026, that would then cause us to change one line in the bylaw, which is, the bylaw is hereby repealed on November 26, 2026, the new repeal date would be whatever date you put in the motion in A, to basically make a different decision or repeal it. I just need to make sure with Ms. Scher and Ms. Pollitt that I'm accurate on that.
Thank you, Your Worship, yes, that is correct.
So, I assume you don't want to make a referral now? Okay, would you, would you like to make an amendment?
Yeah, I'd like to make the amendment that doesn't result in a policy gap.
So, I'm going to say, unless someone wants to call a point of order, the referral's not on the floor, I was still working on the language, the language is not done yet, so, there's not a referral yet, there was an offer to second it, I was still working on language, we hadn't had a debate yet, there's no referral on the floor. Council Frank has the floor, you can make an amendment if you like.
Thank you, yes, I'd like to make that amendment that you referenced in regards to changing the dates, and then the one year to, in, the language of less than one year, and then the dates as well, and then including the public participation meeting and survey.
Okay, so the council's amendment is to amend 2.6A, what was the, you got to give me a timeframe, how many months?
Six.
Six months, so instead of for one year, it's six months, and then November 26, 2026 will be whatever six months is, someone's going to look that up, and then the bylaw will change to, the bylaw that will be introduced tonight will have that date, and everything else is the same in the bylaw, okay? That's your amendment, is there a second for that? Okay, we're not having any debate until I get the wording for that this time. Okay, so, Council Frank is proposing the following amendment, that the motion be amended in Part A to, A, to read, A, the proposed bylaws amended, everything the same, then it says, enforcement effect on November 26, 2025, for six months, to extend the pilot program for electric kick scooters to May 26, 2026, as the province allows a pilot extension of up to five years. So, the two things that are changing are for six months, in May 2026, they are bolded, if you go on current items, you'll see the two changes, the effect of this will change one date in the bylaw, from November 26, 2026, to May 26, 2026, which would align the pieces, everything else in the motion stays the same, it's just Part A being amended. Good? Okay, you can speak to it.
Thank you, yes, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this, I just want to share that many of my residents use electric kick scooters, and many of them take it to their jobs, and to school, and to get around the city, and to go to the grocery store, and I do not think that they would like to have that opportunity and that option taken away from them, it doesn't align with our climate targets, we are trying to provide more mobility options for people to leave their car at home, and I think that kick scooters are one of those options for people to use, so I don't want to wake up tomorrow and take that option away from people as a choice, I think as a council, we should be giving people better options, and I understand and recognize that there are concerns in regards to some issues that are coming alongside kick scooters, but I would say that any mobility option does have issues, there's collisions on bikes, there's collisions in cars, there's collisions in e-scooters, and I think that taking away one of the options that people are using to get to work and to school does not help that, I think providing better regulations and looking at how can we do that in the next couple months would be an opportunity for people to provide that input for us, as well, you know, we have a lot of concerns about traffic congestion, again, people taking e-scooters to work and to school reduce how many people are taking cars, people who use e-scooters spend more time in businesses, there's research and reports showing that people will spend more time downtown and in other areas, something we've talked about in the last two weeks, and again, of course, I'm not saying that we shouldn't consider the safety concerns, I just don't think they should come at the expense of people being able to use their mobility option of choice, so, I'd appreciate the support from council to extend this just for six months, so we can look at this a little bit more fulsomely, and hear from our residents, especially the ones that are using it properly, and who would like to continue to use it, I think it would be really important for us to do that before we take it away without having any consultation with them on this matter, so, I really hope that we can support this, because I just don't want to see it gone as of tomorrow for those especially who use it properly.
Speakers to the amendment. Okay, Council Trossow.
Thank you, through the chair, I certainly appreciate the amendment, and I'll be supporting it, however, question for staff, with respect to the it. However, question for staff. With respect to the cargo powered, the large, the larger cargo powered cycles, have we done any investigation as to how many small businesses might consider adopting this but are not doing that now because of the uncertainty? Because this is a much larger investment than simply buying a electric cycle or a scooter.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. The short answer is no. We haven't really been able to investigate who may wish to use it because it could be any business of any size anywhere in the city. So our staff in transportation demand management are certainly available to provide support if people have questions about those vehicle types. But we haven't reached out broadly to say this may be a good vehicle choice for you because we don't really know each business's particular financial or operational needs.
Thank you. And this doesn't change my support for the amendment, but I'd like to, okay, I'd like to amend the amendment to include the larger cargo powered bicycles in that, in that same time referral and in that same timeframe. And the reason for that is I think that we should not preclude the opportunity for businesses to engage in the much longer term purchase planning of separating a gas, a gas powered vehicle with, with the cargo power assisted bicycles. And I think that we're doing that by not including that in, in the amendment. This is not, this is not a casual purchase that you walk into a bicycle shop and just, and just pay a few thousand dollars to get. This is a much larger investment. We would certainly not be telling, well, I'll, I'll stop that there. But I, we would certainly not be telling users of gas, gas powered motor vehicles that they can't buy them or certain, or certain types. So I think, I think I want to be consistent between the two types, at least until we get more information. I would be very interested in hearing small businesses come forward and, and tell us that they're, they were, in the long run, would like to, would like to do this. So I'd like to put that amendment on the table. I support the amendment otherwise. I'm inclined to vote against the main motion, but it certainly is a lot better with the amendment and it would be better with the amendment to the amendment.
Okay, counselor. I just want to be clear. What do you, like, just articulate to me what you want to try to amend? Because I need to figure out if this is in the bylaw, in which case we're going to be in the same situation where I got to refer it if it's complex. It was a date change. That's about as far as we can go without really messing with the bylaw. So what is it that you want to try to do?
Well, I would, I would add the, I would add the-
Just tell me what you want to do and I-
What I want to do is I'd like to add the cargo power assisted bicycles to the amendment.
They're already, they're already in there.
Both parts of it.
Already in the bylaw.
It says on the electric kick scooter data gathering. So-
And then, and cargo powered assisted bicycles.
Yes.
So they're in there. Are you trying to take them out?
No, I'd like them in there. And I'm, I'm reading this with, that there's some ambiguity. But if you're assuring me that it, that it's in there, I don't want to preclude people looking at this.
Oh, are you looking at part B of the motion, counselor? Because-
Yes.
That's the part where-
I would just add the terms-
That piece ends on March of 2026.
Yes. I would say and cargo power assisted bicycles.
Okay. If you want to amend it, so that's the report back and not the bylaw. We're actually on an amendment on A. If you want to amend B, let's get the amendment on A done. And then you can add an additional piece of the report back.
Okay. Then in A, I'd like to include the word to extend the pilot program for electrical, for electric kick scooters and cargo powered assisted bicycles.
As I read it on the screen, that's exactly what it says in the second line. Where, you look, look on, on your system. To amend bylaw-
I'm looking at item number one. A.
Okay. I, you got to look at vote number three is what we're on.
Okay. I don't see that on my screen.
Oh, sorry. Vote two.
Okay.
Hold on one sec. Hold on.
Yeah, on vote three, it says-
I count, just give me a sec, counselor. Oh, yes. Okay. So if you didn't refresh, it's actually, if you refresh, it's vote two. If you didn't refresh, it's vote three. What we're on is Counselor Frank's and Counselor Ferraro's amendment that basically takes both the electric kick scooter and the cargo powered assisted bylaw and extends it for six months. That's what we're doing.
That's my intention, to extend them both for six months.
It's already in there. That's exactly the amendment they've made.
Okay. Thank you then.
Unless I'm wrong. I looked to staff. No, I'm right? Okay, perfect. So you're fine. It's all in there.
Okay.
Okay. Other speakers to the amendment. Go ahead, Counselor Roman.
Thank you. And through you, can I just clarify which pilot program ends on March 1st, 2026?
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Under the provincial requirements, the large format e-cargo assist ends March 1st, 2026. I don't know what will happen after that ends with the provincial legislation. So this would extend that pilot to that date when it ends and our ability to have any pilot for that particular vehicle type ends. And it would extend the kick scooter to May 26. We would endeavor, of course, to report back more quickly on the kick scooter so a decision can be made for folks as well.
Counselor, just, I understand what you're doing, but I got another counselor has the floor. So Counselor Roman, go ahead.
Thank you. And through you, I'm happy to go back to what Counselor Tressa was trying to bring forward and then I'll speak after.
So I think I understand where Counselor Trosaw's coming from. The reason why it says extend the electric kick scooter, even though it's both bylaws, is there's a provincial item that ends. And in the bylaw, there's a piece that says on March 1st, 2026, it's amended to delete the phrase or cargo powered assisted bicycle because the provincial pilot program ends. So we can't extend something that is provincial in nature. So the bylaw will still can contain that ending. That being said, we can get information on it in a report back to staff, but we can't extend a municipal pilot program that is accessing a province's pilot program beyond the point when it ends, that piece of the pilot program. So if you want to amend that, counselor, I'm going to rule it out of order because you'd be contrary to provincial legislation that is ending it on that date. So the motion is worded correctly. My apologies for the confusion before. I now understand what you're saying, but your amendment would not be in order anyways because we can only extend it as far as the province allows us to extend it, which is March 1st, 2026 on that piece. Okay? So we're back to the amendment. Any other speakers? And Counselor Roman, I'll go back to you because you allowed me to clarify that. I appreciate that.
Thank you, and I appreciate the clarification. So I personally don't need until May 26th, 2026 to make this decision. I think that I could be amenable to waiting till we receive the report that provides the data that we've been waiting on to address the issue and then deal with it at that time. But to me, this seems like we're advancing a decision longer than I need to. So that's just where I am with it. So I'm just sharing my thoughts at this time.
Appreciate that. Any other counselors on the amendment? Okay, Deputy Mary Lewis.
Listen, I, I will start by saying I appreciate what Counselor Frank is trying to do with respect to the fact that there are people using these today that, who are using them according to the rules that they're supposed to follow. But I will say, I respectfully disagree that it's just 16 and under who are disobeying the rules. And unlike motor vehicles, I don't see cars veering into sidewalks and back into roadways and across the, the street in the same way that I see e-scooters where, which are just completely unregulated right now. And Counselor Roman referenced the enforcement piece. They're unlicensed, they're uninsured, and they're unregulated. We're getting a ton of complaints about the behaviors that are happening on them. And honestly, all we're doing here, in my opinion, is providing some more cover to the province. And I'm not sure where and when they're going to move something forward, but they've had time. And they haven't made it a priority to do it. So like, like through you, Chair, I guess I'm asking staff, if, if you bring back a report beyond, well, I'm not even sure. I mean, when we're telling people to follow an e-scooter back to their residence, what mechanisms do we even have if we want to impose regulations of our own? Like, to me, motor vehicle licensing is the purview of the province. Requirement of insurance is a purview of the province. I'm not sure that we can actually, as a municipality, even require that if we want it. So I'm looking through you, Chair, to staff to provide any comment on if we chose to, is it even an option for us to license and require insurance for these? Or do we have to wait for the province to do that?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And through you, we do not have the power to impose an insurance requirement. Currently, it's dealt with as an AMPs issue within our bylaw for using these things, but we are limited in the types of restrictions we can put on them.
Go ahead.
And with respect to requiring the owners to purchase a license so that they're at least covering part of the enforcement costs, like, can we impose licensing? We can't impose insurance, but is there a licensing component?
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Unfortunately, this work is not something that was on staff's radar to do. So we do not have the answers for what would come out of these reports. This is something we could include in the report back, including potential around age restrictions. We will work with obviously our colleagues at LPS and with, with bylaw enforcement. But no, we haven't done the work that would be part of this report to come up with alternatives to the bylaw that are permitted under the provincial pilot program.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So that's my problem is, is what we have is without the province taking action. We've no ability to enforce safety in a practical way. AMPs are only valid if you've got a way to actually deliver them to the owner, whether by mail or by handing it to them. We, we know that we don't have enough traffic enforcement as it is right now on regular vehicle traffic. And so I, I don't know that failing to extend this changes the reality tomorrow. Yes, they're not permitted for use. People are going to continue to use them anyway, and we're going to continue to not enforce it because we have no mechanism to enforce it. So I'm frustrated that we're, again, just being asked to just let it go for now and provide more data to the province, who've done nothing with the data that they've already been provided by multiple municipalities. And the complaints continue to pile up in the neighborhoods. People continue to be frustrated about the way these are behaving. And listen, it's not just these. I mean, I've got issues in my ward that LPS is dealing with, with trying to enforce people operating dirt bikes on the road illegally. And they can't do that either. So to me, all we're doing here is kind of signaling that, well, maybe someday we, the province might put some rules in place if we keep collecting data for them to make a case. I don't know how much data they need to make a case. They should have it by now. So I do appreciate where Counselor Frank is coming from in terms of there are people who are using them appropriately. I don't dispute that for a moment, counselor. You're 100% right on that. But there are a lot of people who aren't. And they're putting themselves and they're putting others in danger. And that's where I struggle with giving any further extension to this. Because it, to me, we're endorsing this use to continue without any regulation when we have no idea when the province is going to move. So I, I, I'm listening, but I haven't heard an argument that's persuading me to extend it.
On the amendment of changing the dates. And any other speakers? Okay. CNN, we're going to open the amendment for voting, which changes it to six months and a, and date of May 26, 2026. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries eight to seven.
Okay. And now we need an as amended motion. Chair is willing to move the as amended. I need a seconder, Counselor Frank. Debate on the as amended motion, which is now everything that came out of committee with the new dates and the bylaws updated with a new date. Go ahead, Counselor Hopkins.
Yes, your worship. I just want to make sure we are adding B as well with the report back in March.
Yes. Everything that is from the committee is contained within the as amended motion with the exception of the two changes we just made as part of the amendment.
Look forward to that report. Thank you.
Okay. Any other speakers? Okay. We'll open the as amended motion for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries eight to seven.
Go, go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, that's, leads us to the next item. That is item eight, the approval of service agreement with Gilzeans Creek Housing Cooperative, Inc., as it relates to bill number 408. I'll put that on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look for speakers. Go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I've had a, a couple of residents reach out to me with some concerns around co-ops and things that are happening there. So out of sort of an abundance of caution, I'm going to vote no on this. But I will be working with staff and figuring out more so that I can support the next one that comes forward. I just want to be clear that it is nothing to do with Gilzeans Creek Housing Cooperative specifically. It's just my concerns about some of the finer details.
Okay. Any other speakers to this? Okay. CNN will open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to one.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Next item on the list is item nine. That's the blue box transition final year, part B update. I'll put that on the floor.
I'll turn the chair over to Deputy Mary Lewis because I asked for this one to be pulled up. Okay. I will start counting in my head while I get my timer open and go to Mayor Morgan. I'm going to ask staff some questions. See, you might want a timer so you can pause your information in your head. So on this one, given the direction that the province has gone, one of the pieces of this is a request for me and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario to request some changes to the regulation. My understanding through engagement with the province is that they've made a firm decision on this and this has been talked about a few times. And so my hesitancy on this is I'm not really interested in writing a letter for something that they are absolutely definitive on, given we have a number of other asks before the province. So I'm, I'm not particularly interested in doing the things that we know they've already made a decision on. Given that, is there, what components of this, there's the civic administration be requested to direct the ministry. I just want to get some information from the staff. What has been engaged on deeply already? And do you see, is there any components of this that we actually need, given where the province has decided they're going to go on this? Let's ask Ms. Scher for that answer.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. With respect to engagement with the province, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Regional Public Works Commissioners of Ontario, and the Municipal Waste Association have actively engaged both with circular materials and with the province. We have correspondence back from the province expressing regret with where CM has landed, circular materials has landed, but indicating that no program changes will be required of the producer groups. I don't know that there would be much likelihood that that position would change, given that municipalities are now moving forward with year end termination of ICI of this non-eligible source blue box material. Every municipality who provided this service, it was an optional service in Ontario is in this situation now, and many have also engaged individually.
Mayor Morgan. Yes. So given that, if I wanted to proceed with not engaging with the province on this further because of they're very definitive on this, would it be that I would ask C and D separated? Because that's the direction for civic administration to request a- Because that's the direction for civic administration to request of the ministry, and then the request of me and AMO to basically do what's already been done. But you could proceed with A and B if council so wanted to, to get mitigative measures, I guess, on other things that we could do outside of provincial direction. Would that be the case? That it would be C and D that we were dropped, given the engagement that's already been done?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Yes, if there is no desire to further attempt to persuade the province through circular materials to include these non-eligible sources, then C and D would be defeated. I will caution on B that we will need to be very cautious, because the businesses who receive this service are a very small component of the small businesses in the city of London. They have many direct competitors who have never received this service. And as we start designing programs to compensate, ameliorate, or offset the loss of the previously free service for these 500 businesses, we must be very careful not to range into the area of bonusing, where there's a competitive disadvantage for directly comparable businesses that were never on the residential routes. My preference would be that we don't tiptoe into those spaces, but certainly, we can provide that advice back in a report in the future, if that's a desire of council.
Mayor Morgan. Okay, so now I have an additional question. This can either be to Ms. Chair or the solicitor. Given the structure of the program outside of a provincial program, is there a concern... I know that... I'm not asking you for to give detailed legal advice, but would there be a concern about us moving into a provision of a bonusing specific organizations and others outside of, say, a structured provincial program like a CIP? Ms. Pollitt.
Thank you, and through Mr. Presiding Officer. We would have to be careful how it is structured, because you don't want to run afoul of the bonusing provisions of municipal act. However, there is some flexibility in terms of how it's structured. For example, as a grant under CIP may be a way to do it, and it's something we could look at in the report back if provision B passes from council.
Mayor Morgan. Okay, then it's my desire, although I may not support any of it, I wanted it at the very least separated into A, B, and then C and D, because I certainly don't support C and D at this time. I'll listen to colleagues on the other pieces. I appreciate the work the committee did, but I just don't see the value of, for all the things that you asked me and AMO to engage the province on, engaging with them on something that they've been absolutely definitive on, that has had extensive lobbying on, that they made a decision on, I'm just not sure that's where we want to put our efforts, given the substantive asks we have of them already. So that's my request for the way the motion be divided.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. Just for clarity's sake, and so the clerks can prepare ahead of time, I think I'm going to ask that we just have A separate, B separate, and C and D together. And that, I think, will allow colleagues to express their individual opinions on the different clauses. I have Counselor Frank next. Counselor Frank, and then Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, and through the Chair, I just had a question to... Oh, I guess I should wait to be recognized, sorry. Sorry, sorry, apologies. Just following up on that update from staff, I am wondering the concept of bonusing. So existing 535 small businesses and nonprofits already received recycling, was that considered bonusing?
Ms. Chair or Ms. Pollitt, whoever wants to start with that one.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I'm certainly not a lawyer, but maybe in avoiding in-camera discussions, because we can have a bit of a general conversation here. We were able to provide that service because we were there with a truck anyway. So in the case now that because we can't commingle streams, we will have to create a brand-new service that is all over the entire city, and it becomes more difficult to say that the geographic ability to collect that without incurring additional cost and complexity is still there. That was always our differentiator. The truck is picking up the residents next door, so picking up the small business really did not incur a significant cost. As we knew we'd have to pay for that service, we brought that as a budget decision to council, because we would have had to start covering the cost of processing and collecting those materials. We've since been told we cannot do either of those things in the short term. So we would, in this case, need to design a citywide independent collection service and purchase processing capacity. I don't know that I would have a reason to tell a small business, say, in an industrial park, that I will not collect from them, but I will collect from a competitor business on a residential street, because the argument that the truck was there anyway, and it really was quite straightforward to do, is no longer in place. So I think it's just a little more complicated than it used to be. We certainly can report back on that, and likely that would involve some in-camera advice from our friends in the legal office once we get there, if that's the desire of council.
Counselor Frank.
Thank you. That does make sense to me. So then, my understanding is if it's on an existing route and we're delivering the service already, then that's where we're not running afoul of the bonusing. So I appreciate that, and stay tuned for future motions related to this tangentially.
Counselor Hopkins, I have you next.
Yeah, thank you. And just following the Mayor's comments around D in particular, I am a board member at AMO, and I can say for many, many years, AMO has been advocating with the province on blue box. And it's, you know, there was a lot of work done there. I don't see this being a conversation. So as much as I do like to advocate on behalf of the city, I don't want to set up expectations as well here at council. So I'm supportive of the Mayor's comments as well. But if anything does come forward, I'd be more than happy to share that with colleagues at AMO. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hopkins. I have Counselor Ferrara next.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. I did have some questions. They were answered with another question, just the way it worked. So I guess, just a request, can you split C and D as well?
Yeah, we can certainly have the clerks split C and D, so we'll vote on all four clauses separately. Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I just had a question through you to staff regarding communication, because I've had a couple of messages from businesses saying, is this true? Is this happening? And I just wondered how this would be communicated to the businesses that will be impacted, given that we're talking about January 1st.
Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Subject to the decision at council tonight, which will give us clarity as to what we're communicating, we will be directly providing this in writing to the businesses that are impacted. We have key messages available already, and have been fielding a number of calls as well, and certainly have also been providing them with contacts for those who wish to speak to the province about the changes in legislation.
Counselor.
Thank you. That's all my questions, and I understand the Mayor's stance, and I'm happy to support that.
Okay, I have no other speakers. Counselor Tressa.
Thank you very much to the Presiding Officer, or the Mayor, as the case may be. Who's chairing? You are, okay. I stand by parts B, C, and D, and I will be supporting parts B, C, and D. And I drafted this motion to come to committee very carefully, and I think parts B, C, and D are all warranted. We've heard from a lot of the affected organizations about the hardship that they're going to suffer because of this regulation, parts of which I think are just purely arbitrary and capricious. Let me ask a question to staff. Let's take the example of a small business that gets a lot of things in boxes, cardboard boxes, everyday cardboard boxes. No hazardous materials, just run-of-the-mill cardboard boxes. Why would that require a separate stream?
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I can't answer the intent of the provincial legislation or the circular materials organization's decisions other than there was a desire to protect the separateness of the residential stream that producers are required to fund and manage from any integration with non-residential waste. But those questions are not ones that staff at this municipalities in Ontario can answer.
Thank you. And through the Chair, through the Presiding Officer, that's exactly why I think this regulation is arbitrary and capricious, and why we must continue pushing back on it. I mean, we're talking about an optometrist, for example, who gets glasses in cardboard boxes. There is no reason based on science why we would need another stream. This is an arbitrary, capricious, and I think quite weak regulation. And for us to say, well, we've already pushed on this, but we don't want to push on this anymore, I think gives the concerns of our residents, including especially the affected small businesses, the churches, and the other non-exempt organizations. We need to support them. We need to support them. I've heard this from the museum. I've heard it from a church in my ward. I've heard it from small, independent merchants. And yes, please support B, C, and D. We need all of them. Thank you.
Looking for other speakers. Seeing none. I'm going to ask the clerk to open the vote. We'll start with A, and we'll just work through alphabetically A, B, C, and D.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
And now clause B.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to four.
And now clause C.
Closing the vote, motion carries eight to seven.
And now clause D.
Closing the vote, motion fails four to 11.
And that concludes item nine. We'll return the chair to Mayor Morgan. Great, then I'll go back to the committee chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item is item 10. That's the Housing Collaborative Initiative Updated Financials and Project Conclusion. I'll put that on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look to the speakers. Go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I had circulated amendment on this, so I'll read it out now. It's been shared with the clerk.
Yeah, go ahead and read it out.
The civic administration be directed to report back to a future meeting of the Community and Protective Services Committee on any further costs paid with regards to the Housing Collaborative Initiative, HCI, project beyond what has been publicly reported to the date of the November 10, 2025 staff report.
That's seconded by Counselor Priville. So that would be an addition to the pieces that are there, I believe. Yep, okay. So we're going to talk about the amendment then. I'll start with you, if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just keep it quick. This is just, there are some few loose ends. And so this is just to reassure the public that the full and complete costs will be shared, that we'll know the final cost, and it'll be reported publicly.
Other speakers to this. Counselor Tressa.
May I ask the staff through the Chair, if there are additional costs, would there be any reason why you would not otherwise report that to us in the normal course of affairs, such that this motion is needed?
First off, let me say, my understanding of the committee's report is that council asked to be reported back from the point that we said stop to today, which is, I think, about a two-year period. Mr. Maythers can certainly report back on previous costs, but it wasn't the scope of what was identified for this report. So it's not that staff were not reporting on that. It's that this report was kind of time-framed. Counselor Stevenson is looking for a more holistic picture to come back that maybe extends further back in time. But I'll let Mr. Maythers articulate anything further.
Through you, Worship. So currently, the report that we've flagged has a amount of $10,864, which is what we feel is the appropriate amount of funding that hasn't been, that still would need to be used. So if there is anything that's beyond that value, if this motion passes, we'll bring forward a report. It is likely we'd bring a report. If we didn't have any budget to be able to cover that difference, but if council wants to have that confirmation, happy to bring a report back.
Could you... If you're repeating yourself, I'm sorry, say it again. But if you didn't say this, or if it was ambiguous, what's the estimated amount that we're discussing here?
Mr. Maythers.
Through you, Worship, absolutely. So the estimated amount is $10,864. So my understanding of the resolution here would be that if there's any cost in excess of that value, then we would come back with a committee report.
Through the Chair, would counselors be able to get that information through your office?
Mr. Maythers.
Through you, Worship. So that if it's in excess of $10,000, if that's something that you want to provide as part of this resolution, happy to do that as well. We don't usually provide that level of detail, but if that's something council wants to be able to be provided with, a report, or asking us to provide back that information to council through some other means, it would be very much appropriate.
Go ahead, Counselor Tressa.
And the committee of jurisdiction for this continues to be caps? And caps would be able to make that request if they thought it was necessary?
Through the Chair, absolutely. This would be a caps-related item.
Thank you.
Okay, other speakers to this amendment? Go ahead, Deputy Mary Lewis.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I'm just going to say, in this case, I'll support this, because I do think that, well, perhaps disproportionate for the amount of money we're talking about, the media attention to this story has garnered a lot of public concern. And so I think that having any additional dollar amounts reported back in the interest of public interest is fair. As I said, I think the attention paid to this may be slightly exponentially above some of the attention that some other items may deserve, but that's my opinion. So I'll just leave it at that and say, I think just bringing back the numbers, whatever they are, if they exceed that, would be helpful.
Any other speakers on the amendment? Go ahead, Counselor Priville.
Thank you. I'm supporting this, as I want to have the kind of a full picture, the entire amount, full closure, lessons learned, and moved on. Thank you.
Any other speakers on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, we'll open just the amendment for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to three.
Now, an as amended motion. Counselor, are you willing to move the as amended? Okay, seconded by Counselor Stevenson. Any debate on the as amended motion? Go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
I just wanted to say that I've, you know, been looking into this quite a bit, and I did do some submissions requesting a referral to Governance Working Group. I've chosen not to move forward with that, because we've got a lot of things on Governance Working Group. And instead, I'm going to work with some of my colleagues on policy updates to address some of the issues that arose during this project. As outlined by staff, you know, there was steps to follow moving forward to ensure improved transparency to council in the future, like regular reporting for delegated or multi-year projects, disclosure of amended agreements, and consultant engagement reporting. And I think those things are critical, that we get those policies in place so that they outlive us here in terms of making sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen again. But I'm going to work with my colleagues and bring those forward to the appropriate committee rather than my original request, which was to refer to Governance Working Group. So I'm going to support this and work behind the scenes on those policy updates.
Any other speakers to the as amended motion? Go ahead, Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you, I'll keep this brief. But yes, I appreciate the amendment that was proposed and the conversation that's been had at committee. However, one of the things I struggle with is how we can effectively make changes to the way we do things in order to be able to not have these situations arise. So while I appreciate that we can try to explore options, I think one of the things we also have to take some time and think about... we also have to take some time and think about is what happens during transition periods. And so that is something that, now being on counsel, I'm more aware of after this incident, and taking that and some of those key learnings forward as we move on. Thank you.
I have no other speakers on the speakers list, so we're going to open the as amended motion for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries fourteen to one.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you. Next is item eleven. That's the Lambeth Neighborhood Connectivity Plan. I'll put that on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. Counsel Hopkins, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. This is an amendment that I'd like to bring forward. I would have liked to have done this at PEC. I was told that I'd have to bring it to counsel. I have further investigated the amendment, and it was suggested that it would be part of the Lambeth Neighborhood Connectivity Plan. So to get the amendment, I will read it out. I am looking for a secondar, and then I will proceed to explain the connecting the dots here. So the motion to be amended reads that Civic Administration be directed to reassess the timing of the Mariana Drive sidewalk implementation in coordination with proposed residential development at the 4402 Colonel Talbot Road. So that is my amendment, and I see.
And Counsel Pelosi is willing to second it, so you can go ahead and provide the rationale.
Yeah, thank you again, your worship. The Lambeth Neighborhood Connectivity Plan, first of all, thanks to staff. They did a lot of great work coming up with the plan, and it was presented at CAPS. And this plan did not take into account sidewalks on Mariana Drive. It did take them into account from the five-to-ten-year plan, but not from the one-to-five-year plan. Go forward a couple days at planning, we received an application for an infill on Mariana Drive for 31 units. One of the things we heard loud and clear from the public participation meeting and that I've heard throughout the application process is safety on the streets and how do we move around with the extra traffic. There is only access to the 31 units on Mariana Drive. There is no other opportunities for access, so therefore, Mariana Drive, not having sidewalks, should be looked at if this development proceeds. We're not sure when it's going to proceed, but if it does go forward in the next one-to-five years, I am asking with this amendment that we reassess sidewalks on Mariana Drive. So I'm looking for support here. It's supposed to go into the Lambeth Neighborhood Connectivity Plan. This is where the amendment will take place.
Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Very, very happy to support Counsel Hopkins on this amendment. We talked about this after PEC. I committed to her then that I would be fully supportive of this. It aligns with what we heard from residents on Mariana at the Planning Committee meeting, and so I think we absolutely can take a look and perhaps move this one up the schedule a little bit. If it's warranted, we have a PEC agenda to get through yet, but presuming that things move that way, I think that one of the things we definitely heard from residents is they'd like a sidewalk here. It's kind of refreshing to have residents asking for a sidewalk rather than opposing a sidewalk, and so very supportive of this. And I did have a couple of Counsel Hopkins' residents reach out after planning and say, "Do please support our counselor on bringing forward a sidewalk," and so I'm going to fulfill that today and vote yes, and I hope we send this one forward fifteen to nothing.
Any other speakers? Counsel Pelosi.
Thank you. Completely supportive of this. I appreciate the counselor showed up to speak to this at PEC. Procedure was told it wasn't the right place because I tried to do it there, so happy to help here as it is needed, and the residents were supportive. I'll also note that the street has streetlights. It was just missing sidewalks. So that was just differentiated at committee as well.
Great, thank you. I have no other speakers on Counsel Hopkins' amendment, so we'll open her amendment for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries fifteen to zero.
And now, as for the as amended motion, Counsel Ferrer is willing to move. Counsel Hopkins, you're willing to second the as amended? Any debate on the as amended motion? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Last item that was pulled, I'll put on the floor. That's item number thirteen. It's a motion from Counsel McAllister regarding the garbage along the Highbury Avenue South corridor between Hamilton Road and Bradley Avenue. I'll put that on the floor.
Okay, I'm going to turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor Lewis. I asked for this one to be pulled. Thank you, Mayor Morgan, and anticipating this one, I've got my timer ready, so go ahead.
This one will be a lot shorter. So I'm very supportive of what Counsel McAllister wanted to do in part A, and I think some additional cleanups are probably warranted along this stretch. What I'm not supportive of is the way that B is written. It's going to sound like I'm against writing letters today, but, because I write a lot of letters, but I want you to know that the Mayor of St. Thomas, the Warden of Elgin County, and the other regional mayors are currently talking from an advocacy position on Highbury Road, both within the city limits and south of the city limits. There is a need to widen that road in conjunction with support from the province. We are jointly advocating, talking to staff about aligning EAs and working together on this. I'm certainly happy to raise during those discussions the concerns. I would imagine the concerns within the city limits are the same concerns outside the city limits of people dumping. I can tell you from talking to some regional mayors, there's challenges with people in the city driving out to the county and dumping off their stuff that they don't want. So this is a challenge that is essentially bad behavior by a number of individuals, but I don't necessarily need a direction to work with them on a joint communications campaign and reminding residents. I think what I prefer to do is have the discussion with them as part of the ongoing discussions about that, and continue to echo what I said on the radio on Monday, and that there's a really easy solution to this, and that's continue to just generally tell people, you know, "Don't throw your stuff on the side of the road," right? Costs all of us a lot of money to pick it up. Looks bad, you know? People need to take pride in their city. They need to not layer costs on all of us by potentially doing additional cleanups of these roads, and they should get rid of their waste or refuge through the appropriate channels, whether that's calling for a pickup of large bulky items through our processes here in the city, or it's driving something to the landfill and dropping it off for a reasonable rate. You know, there's solutions to this, but at this time, I'm just not supportive of investing a lot of effort into a general advocacy campaign with the other mayors. We want to focus our work on the work of improving that road, updating it, but again, I'm very supportive of part A and Counsel McAllister's request to get a little more information on what we can do within the city limits to tidy it up. I'll let the other mayors know that, should we perceive that, that, you know, maybe they can align some of the work that they're doing in the county as well. So I'm going to ask these to be separated, but I wanted to say that with the utmost respect to Counsel McAllister and with my support for part A.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. Counsel McAllister.
Thank you. Through the presiding officer, recognize where the mayor is coming from. I'll just kind of go through each one. A, I think we can all generally agree. I'm kind of drafting some of my colleagues here, but I know fourteen, one, two, three, four, all of us that chair Highbury, at some point or another, are going to get a complaint about the garbage. It is a gateway to our city, and I consistently hear from residents that they're fed up of it being a dumping ground. I'm going to take this opportunity to remind residents of both London, Elgin, St. Thomas, and anyone that uses that road, please secure your loads. I cannot tell you the number of times I've driven behind people and stuff comes flying off, or people throw stuff out the windows, and I think it's very disrespectful to London, and it's just disgusting, frankly. Understanding where the mayor is coming from with part B, but I still think it warrants a discussion. I understand in terms of the conversations that have been happening with the province, but if anything further can be done, if even those conversations with the province, to, you know, push for them to have any sort of a campaign to just remind people, you know, sometimes you have to do a shame campaign to remind people, "Stop, you know, dumping your trash here." And I think that, you know, that still warrants the discussion. Not sure if anything will come out of it, but I still think because of the volume we've seen, that there needs to be a coordinated effort, especially between the three that use it probably the most, and recognizing as this area becomes heavily developed, we've seen a lot of big developments along that stretch of Highbury. I'm sure we'll see more heading through Elgin and St. Thomas. I think it's good that we have a unified voice in terms of ensuring that that road is clean and safe for everyone that uses it. So looking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McAllister. Just looking for any other speakers. I have, I'll go to Counsel Trosaw, and then Counsel Hillier. Counsel Trosaw.
Thank you. Through the chair, those who listened to the proceedings at committee recall that I was a little skeptical about this at first because there's so many parts of the city where this is necessary. And the counselor, the ward counselor, very patiently and effectively explained to me why this is a special case, given some of the circumstances on Highbury, and I voted for it. And that stands, and it stands for all the parts of this. I don't think asking the mayors to just sort of engage in a joint communication on something that should go without saying is a burden. I don't think it's really that much of a big undertaking. So I'll be supporting both parts of this. I appreciate the mayor wanting to cut down on communication, but I think as long as we're doing this, as long as we're doing this, we should use all the tools at our disposal. And I think we have two mayors who are very, very well-known in the area, and I think this could be an effective communication. So I'll be supporting both parts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Trosaw. Counsel Hillier.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate the council bringing this forward. As we know, Highbury does become quite of a problem, but I wish staff could remind us of, we've had this conversation many times in the last few years. I know Counsel Lewis and myself have had this conversation. What is the problem with staffing and getting this done twice per year?
Ms. Share.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. As noted at committee, we are able to do this twice per year. It's really not so much about staffing as it is about requiring a full closure for a full day, which, as a major economic corridor, creates challenges for the many businesses and commuters who rely on it. So we are looking at ways where we can do some more spot cleanup without a full closure. It is quite challenging and creates some danger, but we can move to twice a year. We will do one as early as we can in the season, and we will continue to do another one as late as we can in the season to try to keep it in a bit better shape. Most other streets, if you call, we're able to respond in real time. This is one that requires a lot more planning.
Counsel Hillier.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm just wondering, because I know the citizens of London do not want their main street coming into London closed twice a year, so I would like staff to come back with something, another option, that doesn't involve closing the whole road. That's all I'm looking forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hillier. Looking for other speakers. Counsel Pelosi.
Thank you. To start off, not sure if we can get an answer from staff on what a potential option might be, as I know we don't like close it just for employee safety as are on the sides of the road and the excessive speeds of that road. And then I have a question or a comment.
Sure. I took Counsel Hillier's comment as rhetorical, that he would appreciate if staff brought forward another option, that he expected an answer today. However, with your question, Counsel Pelosi, I will go to Ms. Share to see if she has anything to offer off the top of her head on alternatives.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Certainly, we'll explore that as part of the report back. There is some ability potentially to do very quick pickups of large items, but where we have to do a lot of debris and litter cleanup, it does require the full closure. The challenge with this road is not only that it's very busy and high speed, there's nowhere safe to park. So we do have other busy high-speed roads, but they have wider shoulders, and we're able to get out of the traveled way well enough that we can manage that safely. This is one that unfortunately, there just really isn't a lot of safe space for our teams to work, and as much as the litter is problematic, it is much more problematic to be concerned about the safety of our staff who are performing the work.
Counsel Pelosi.
Thank you. Without making an amendment to anything, would it be possible for staff to consider as they're revisiting Counsel Hillier's request of how else we could do this, to come back with what a safe space might look like? It might be a simple lay-by that might serve us well, as this road's not going anywhere and just going to get busier over years to help service in that area.
Ms. Share.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I don't want to rule out any potential options, but what is here is around operations and not around geometric changes. When we start changing a rural cross-section like that, we would have to look at urbanizing the drainage, which is a fairly significant change in investment. So we would be more inclined to look at operational options that could do some spot cleanup a little bit more regularly without having to make a capital change to the design of the road.
Counsel Pelosi.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Driving that road on my way to Argyle for hockey purposes, well aware of what you see popping up, also aware of election signs that somehow those still managed to get up even though there was no safe place to park while doing it. Just wanted to comment that I know we have garbage and refuge in this area as well. Happy to support B, as I know some, I know we're focusing mainly on what the counselor had raised, but, you know, it's a primary in those areas. Also, Wellington Road has the same type of areas. Different vehicles and individuals seek their way to W-12A as well in that landfill area. Some things magically come off as they weren't secured properly, and some things, I believe, are purposely discarded on the ways. So recognizing this is an opportunity to do potentially joint comms advocacy, happy to support it.
Thank you, Counsel Pelosi, and I think Keith Matheson used to hang glide in to put those signs in. Counsel Lehman.
Thank you. I'm just curious regarding the remarks that the mayor made in relation to B. Some pushback on this request with good reason, in my opinion, but anyway, I'd like to go to the mayor if this passes. How would you intend to go about it?
Mayor Morgan.
Well, what I would do if this passes, first off, I would fully respect the will of council. I'm not going to not do something that council asked me to do. So I would engage with the Mayor of St. Thomas, the Warden of Elgin County. I would talk to them about my council's desire to have a joint communications campaign to remind residents, and I think we would come back to the requisite councils with a plan and a request for a budget to do a communications campaign that would be widespread to the residents in the region. So I would be clear that we would take this very seriously, but if you want me to, if you want us to remind the residents and commercial operators to properly secure their loads, you know, we're going to need, we're going to need some resources to actually communicate that. That's, I mean, I'll do some social media with the mayor, but if you want to take it seriously, which I will, I'll come back with a plan and a request for how we would do that properly with the requisite financial ask.
Counsel Lehman.
Thank you.
Any further speakers? Seeing none, I will ask the clerks to open the votes. We will do clause A first, and then clause B.
Closing the vote motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. I'll ask the clerks now to open clause B.
Closing the vote. Motion fails. Five to ten.
Thank you, colleagues. That concludes item thirteen. I will return the chair to Mayor Morgan.
Thank you. I'll go back to the committee chair.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes the seventeenth report of the Community Protective Services Committee.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel. We're on to item eight point two, which is the seventeenth report of the Planning and Environment Committee, and I'll turn it over to Chair Lehman to present the report.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull the following items. Number five, number eight, number nine, and number thirteen.
Okay, five, eight, nine, and thirteen. Anybody like anything else dealt with separately? He did not say ten. So five, eight, nine, thirteen separate. Okay? Okay, Counsel, you want to make a motion then?
Yes, I'll move items one through four, six and seven, ten.
Yes, I'll move items 1 through 4, 6 and 7, 10, 11, 12, and 14.
Okay, that motion's on the floor. I'll look for a discussion on those items. Well, I was going to say a few words, so maybe I'll turn the chair over. Oh, Counselor Stevens, you go first.
I just wanted to quickly point out for the public who might be watching that bylaws 417 to 419 are the heritage designation for the 100 Kellogg Lane properties, just in case. I don't think people stick around to when we read the bylaws always, so I just wanted to make a point that that's there.
I'm going to turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Go ahead, Mayor Morgan.
So, the reason why I paused is because I made some nice notes on this that I don't know where they are. I think I left them in the committee room, but I'll just speak from my memory of a couple of items within this group. One is 2.1, the Building Services Report, and the other is 2.3, the Housing Accelerator Fund Report. I just wanted to emphasize that there are significant accomplishments that the municipality has made within both of these reports. Not only have we surpassed and broken a record on the value of construction that has come into the city, signaling continued confidence from the investment and development sector in the City of London, but also the number of permits that we've been able to churn out at a time when it's been challenging across the province to move on permitting, as well as exceeding and meeting and exceeding our Housing Accelerator Fund targets in both consecutive years. I think that's a testament to the work, first off, it's a testament to the direction that council has given and the work that we've done around this horseshoe, but more importantly, the work of our staff to ensure that they're executing council's vision to create as much housing as possible, to create the conditions for proper investment, to speed up the permitting process and process those permits in an effective way, and the engagement with the industry that's required to continue to make improvements to processes along the way, which is an ongoing continuous improvement exercise. I also want to thank the investment community, the development and investment community, for their confidence in our city. Continuing to break construction records in our city means that there are dollars flowing into the city to help us build the housing that we need. People are investing their hard-earned dollars here. People have confidence in our city. People have confidence in the downtown of our city, where we've seen an exceptional amount of high-density residential development. And I just want to emphasize that I'm both on behalf of council appreciative of that investment and know that this is how we actually tackle housing challenges is collectively through good planning, good decision-making by council, excellent execution by staff, and ongoing discussions and engagement with those who are actually putting dollars in the ground in our city to ensure that we continue improving processes. So, not from my notes, but from the top of my head, Chair, I'm very happy to see these items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. I will return the chair to you.
Great. Any other speakers on the items before us? Okay, then we'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 15 to 0.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. I'd like to put number 5 on the floor. This is regarding the heritage designation of the property at 1269 Hyde Park Road.
Okay, this is on the floor. I'll look for speakers to this one. Counselor Tressow, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, I have a question for staff. Should the amendment from the committee go forward, what would be the remedy for those who wish to support the staff report? Would they be able to file any type of appeal, or would this be the end of it?
Yeah, I'll go to our staff. We'll find you the answer, Counselor. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. I may, I'll start off, and maybe Legal would like to weigh in, but once council makes a decision, it becomes final.
And on the other hand, if we make a decision wherein the property owner is aggrieved, they can appeal, correct? Or is that also final, I should ask?
Yeah. I think the council is asking if the staff recommendation that went to committee was passed, what would the remedies be in that situation for, say, the landowner?
Through your worship, that would refer to the Planning Act application versus the Heritage Act application. The applicant could appeal the Planning Act application.
Okay, well, thank you. That's very, that's very helpful. I'm really troubled by the recent, which is nothing we can do anything about, but I'm really troubled by the declining ability of citizens to be able to access these appeals. Let me speak to the merits, though, of the heritage designation. And please correct me if I'm wrong through the mayor. Two of the nine heritage aspects need to be approved, and in this case, three have been approved. What is the basis, in fact? What is the basis in the evidence for denying this, notwithstanding the report from staff?
I can go to members of the Planning Committee who moved the motion, if you want, because our staff obviously wrote a different report. So, Counselor Tressow, you, I mean, they don't have to answer, but I'm happy to engage with... Okay, go to the chair.
Well, basically, as Chair of Planning, this is the recommendation coming from Planning to council, so it ends there.
Well, your response is this is our recommendation. I'm trying to understand why, since three of the nine were sustained.
I think you'll have to wait for the debate from other colleagues, Counselor, because I know I have others on the list who were at that meeting, but I don't want to get into a question-and-answer of different colleagues. I know the chair was willing to answer, but if you're looking for questions on why the Planning Committee members made the vote that they did, I think they can stand up and justify that in their comments and debates. It's very difficult to go to staff, except on the original report, which is not the direction the committee went.
Well, in that case, I will, I guess if I sit down, I'm done on this, and I'll come back to this with the planning application. But I really think there were three criteria that were met, and I think that this creates sort of almost a presumption, if not a very high expectation, that heritage designation, which in my opinion is very warranted, in my opinion is very badly needed, and in my opinion is one of the few protections that the community has from the loss of these historic and irreplaceable heritage aspects. So, I'll certainly be asking people to vote no on the staff recommendation and go back to the recommendation of staff, which I thought was very well thought out and very well supported. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Deputy Mayor Lewis next.
Thank you, your worship. So, I'm going to strongly encourage colleagues to uphold the committee recommendation, and I'm going to address a couple of the questions I just heard. The Part IV heritage designation under the Planning Act and provincial legislation says a property can be considered for heritage designation if it meets two of the nine criteria. Doesn't say has to be. It's actually council's decision. The planning, the application, the applicant's consultant identified two of nine. Our staff identified three of nine. Whichever way you slice it, it failed on six and potentially seven of nine categories. And these evaluations are very subjective. They're not based in measurements. They're based in subjective opinion. For example, the requirement that is tied to the area's cultural history and heritage, it tried to tie it to the old Hyde Park corner, which on the aerial map provided in our planning report wasn't even visible when looking at the subject lands. That's how distant it is. Tried to identify it as a landmark. Again, what is landmark is subjective. For me, you need to be able to see a landmark from some recognizable distance. We've got a railway berm on one side. We've got a commercial plaza on the other side. This is right in the middle of a lot. It's not a geographic landmark, that's for sure. To me, it actually only meant one of the nine criteria. That's why, and further to that, our advisory committee, our own community advisory committee, did not recommend this for heritage designation. It was a split vote, but our advisory committee did not recommend this for heritage designation. I think that speaks volumes to whether or not it meets the criteria. Just because something meets a couple of criteria does not mean that it has to be designated as a Part IV heritage property. You know, I've heard and I've seen a few comments from people, make them keep it, develop around it, move it, but keep it on the property. It's easy for somebody who doesn't have skin in the game to say, absorb the cost of moving it. But when we talk about housing affordability, and I'm going to tell you, this is a really ballpark, and I did not get this number from the applicant. I got this number from another developer in the city to just give me an unbiased opinion. What in a high-level estimate would it cost to move this? They said probably between $2.5 and $3 million added to the cost of the project to move it onto another location of the property. So, when we talk about housing affordability, we can't say we want more housing affordability. We can't say we don't want to add to the urban growth boundary when we're going to say we have to designate this old building in the middle of a lot that can't be moved in an economically viable situation and kept on the property to allow development to happen here. I'll talk to the merits of the development application later in the agenda, but when it comes to the heritage designation, this does not meet the test for a Part IV designation. And when people look at even the use, the use of the building has changed over time from residential to a commercial establishment. There have been modifications made already over the years, and so I cannot encourage colleagues strongly enough to support the committee recommendation. This is an old building, but it is not a Part IV heritage designation level building to qualify. And if we are going to infill and build up and have affordability, we cannot save every building on the basis that it is old. We need to look at what are the key priorities. We asked our committee, our advisory committee on planning and heritage, and they identified 13 really high-priority properties out of the cultural heritage list that they thought we should really have staff look at closely, and they had another half a dozen that they said these would sort of be the next tier. So, even in the top 20, this didn't make it in the top 20 on a cultural heritage list where we know the clock is actually ticking down from the provincial government in terms of the deadline they've set of January 1 of 2027, when all the remaining items will come off the cultural heritage list if they haven't been reviewed and evaluated by staff and designated as such. So, to me, this is one that's a very clear subjective, and staff have to bring forward the recommendation when there's two, because that's the threshold at which they're able to bring forward the recommendation to say council can now consider this. They only have that option. So, this isn't that staff are just bringing forward their opinion based on they want to save it. This is the threshold for them, but it is not the threshold for us. And for me, I'm going to be very consistent. I've never supported anything that hasn't met half the heritage criteria. This one meets two or three, depending on which consultant's or staff opinion you want to take on this. It's divided. So, there's not even agreement between the two sides as to how many boxes this checks, so I can't support a heritage designation on this building.
I have Counselor Hopkins and then Counselor Frank next.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I want to thank the deputy mayor. I always appreciate hearing his perspective. I may not agree with it, but I do appreciate the reasoning behind why the committee would refuse the heritage designation. I won't be supporting this. I do support staff's recommendation, which is to keep it a heritage building. That does not mean we stop development. That does not mean development can't occur. What it does mean is that we support heritage in our city. And I look at staff. I look at them as being the experts. I appreciate other consultants. I appreciate the work the advisory group does, but I do look at the reports from staff to help me understand the designation. But to me, what's more important is what Londoners think of this building, and I do know Londoners do appreciate it. And so, I will not be supporting the committee's recommendation.
Go ahead, Counselor Frank.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to reiterate some of the concerns I shared at PEC, mostly regarding a reminder that nothing in this city has all nine boxes checked, and that our most valuable heritage assets at most have six of nine. Oh, seven. I was corrected, seven. So, I just wanted to flag that for folks, if that's influencing your decision at all. Most things have three or four. And then the only other thing I want to say is I'm delighted with how much we value the advisory committee's advice, and I think hopefully that applies to all advisory committees. Thanks.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. Just want to follow up on the deputy mayor's comments there and what's been commented since. Not voting for this designation doesn't mean that people aren't in favor of heritage. It's just a different opinion of where that, where that bar is met. As mentioned, two of nine or three of nine, the advisory committee not recommending this is interesting. The councillor was at PEC and asked staff, what, how many of nine did we meet in the ones that we have done? And recently, it's been seven or so, as was stated. But I think what's, I think it's important, I just emphasize what deputy mayor said. Our advisory committee at Heritage was tasked this year with looking at 2,000 of these properties that are listed as potential heritage properties, and they spent nine months doing a deep dive on all these properties. And when they came back to us a few months ago, this property was not on the list, I believe it was 12 or 13, that they suggested that we should really look and consider hard at looking at heritage designation, which I intend to do. So, for me, that's almost two strikes from the advisory committee. One, they looked at it during that process, and then they looked at it again as a result of this particular application, and they were consistent in what they have been advising us. So, yeah, you know, it's a, it's a call, but I have to, for me personally, in my opinion, it didn't meet the bar that I use for, that I have used in the past for actually designating heritage properties.
Other speakers to this item. Okay. Counselor Almond, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you. So, I did speak to this at committee, and I just shared my thoughts on the building itself and definitely the feelings of residents in my ward that have been shared with me so far. So, I know that this building has a lot of significance for the area and that whether the heritage report does confirm that, so does the, so does the staff, or sorry, the report provided by the developer, just with respect to how it fits into Hyde Park. However, I understand the perspectives of the committee as well, that this is only three of nine of the criteria and that therefore, you know, it's not that strong of recommendation. I did meet with the developer just to get a sense of what they had planned for this building, and I asked whether or not there was more that could be done, because I'm of both minds on this. I could see the purpose of keeping, retaining the building. I understand the cost and complexity associated with doing that. I do think, though, as suggested by our staff in the report, even a partial rear demolition only would allow for some of that heritage to be kept, for that iconic landscape portion of the building to be kept, or that look. I understand why it can't be retained on site if this plan goes forward. So, I'm not going to support the heritage designation at this time. I will continue to discuss with the developer ways that this can be, can be commemorated in an effective way. We did talk about a number of strategies yesterday for that, and I think that that's a way forward, and I appreciate the work that Counselor Lehman's done on this, because I know he has had those similar discussions. I know he has had those similar discussions, and I plan to work with him on that going forward.
Okay, that exhausts my speaker's list on this particular item. This is on the heritage designation. We'll open this for vote. So the committee's recommendation was not to designate, we're voting on the committee's recommendation, so we'll open that for voting. If you vote, yeah, and if you think you got it wrong, the vote's still open, so you can switch your vote.
If I want what staff wanted, that's the no.
That's correct.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 10 to 5.
Go ahead, committee chair.
Thank you. Moving on to number eight, this is regarding 1447, 1449 Dundas Street. Mayor Staff informed me there is a small housekeeping amendment that needs to be made. The clerk has the wording, so that's why I pulled this.
Okay, so you put the original committee recommendation on the floor, and you're willing to put the administrative changes to the bylaw?
Correct, yes, I would like to make that amendment.
And Counselor Pelosi's willing to second that. Any discussion on what happens from time to time, just some small cleanup of the bylaw? Okay, all right, so this is just on the amended piece. We're going to open that for voting.
Motion carries 14 to 1.
Okay, now we need an as amended.
I would like to move as amended.
Okay, and seconded still by Counselor Pelosi. Yep, okay. All right, the as amended debate, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Worship. Very excited to be supporting this. Thanks staff for the work on catching that technical amendment too, and for the work that they did to help with the motion to get this approved. This is a great infill project in Ward 2. It's going to create lots of units of new housing. It is within a, well, I might not be able to, if you're maybe Vladdy Guerrero Jr., you could hit a baseball from here onto the psychiatric hospital lands, where we have massive redevelopment happening over the next 15 to 20 years. And so to me, this is an appropriate use. Steps have been taken to address the, to enter into agreement by the applicant with CN, CP Rail, with the rail lines being there, which moved quicker than often some of the railway challenges can, so very happy to see that's already been put in place there. Just very happy to do this. The developer hosted a public meeting, there was no community opposition to this. Argyle BIA, it is in their BIA corridor, there's ground floor commercial opportunities being provided on site. They are very happy and supportive of it, so just in general, this has my support and lots of support from the ward, so happy to have this on the floor and ask council to support it.
Okay, anyone else on the as amended motion? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 15 to 0.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to put number nine. This is regarding 1269 Hyde Park, and this is for a zoning application on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'm going to put myself on the speaker's list. I'll just go first, so I'll put Deputy Mayor Lewis in the chair.
Thank you, Counselor Lehman. I have the chair and recognize Mayor Morgan.
Thank you. So it probably comes as no surprise that I make some comments on this, having been the ward counselor up in the area. I am in a relatively similar position as Counselor Aman, certainly understand the desire for development in this area, certainly know the character and history of the development, although may not be Part IV heritage designation, has some meaningful sentiment with the community up there. And I want to thank the committee who made the recommendation for adding and putting in the clause C, that the site plan authority be requested to ensure proposed documentation and commemoration of the existing building as proposed by the applicant, the site plan process, and the applicant be encouraged to consult with the city's heritage planners on materials that may be salvaged and incorporated into commemorative features. I'm very happy to see that. My question through the presiding officer to our staff is, what kind of things were in the proposed documentation and commemoration?
Thank you, through the presiding officer. They've identified the Stantec Consulting, it had identified along the north wall, the garage, some commemorative features identifying, because it's near the multi-path system that people could observe. They've also identified some brick and cornices to be retained, and that could be integrated somehow into that commemoration or as part of any of the development. It's very open-ended at this point, there's flexibility, and that is working with staff to come up with something that's good for the community at the end of the day.
Mayor Morgan.
Thank you. Then, you know, let me add my voice to what Counselor Aman said, and I know Counselor Lehman, to the applicant in this file. Like, I strongly, strongly encourage you to work with our staff, work with the ward counselors who know the community well, to find elements of this building that you can preserve and incorporate into the new building. I think you will do yourself a great service by doing that, because people will appreciate the new development even more, especially if that new development contains commercial-type features like a renewed, say, crossings restaurant in some way, whether or not they want to stay there or whether it's a different restaurant. I think having the same feel and character within that, we've seen this been proposed a number of times in our city, where there might have been an old pub, it could be, elements could be preserved and incorporated into it, I think is a respectful way to capture some of the history and meaning of a site into a new development in a way that draws the public in and makes them a part of it. I certainly wish them luck with the infill in this area. I think if you can achieve an infill project between train tracks and car dealership, which is going to have some lights at night, you know, more power to you, because if you can put housing there and get people to purchase it, I think that's a great and ambitious project to try to proceed with. If you want to draw the public in, though, it's my strong encouragement that you work with our staff to incorporate some of these features and preserve a lot of, some of the components of the building that I think could make very unique and interesting features within a new build on this site. You know, the reason why I support the new build in this way is I, you know, a number of years back, you know, we directed, and I think rightly so, the preservation of a heritage house at North Rutledge and Hyde Park Road. Same sort of situation where we were requesting it to be moved a short amount of time, the costs were prohibitive. What you see now is a severed lot with half of a high-density residential building built and the other half not proceeding yet, you know, years later. I would rather find a pathway here to proceed with both retaining the elements within that building in some way and proceed with the housing, so that we're not in a similar situation as we are slightly north of there, where you've got what was half of a proposed development, where people are moved in and living there and having housing, and another half that has yet to proceed with development, because they're still working out the details and the cost of preserving. Again, I voted for that designation, but there are consequences to that, and that is, you know, in part why that development hasn't proceeded on the north half of that site, on that iconic corner. So I will work diligently with the counselors, should they want my support, to engage with the development proponent and our staff to encourage their retention of features here. I look forward to more housing up in that area, and so I'll be supporting committee's recommendation, but only because, only because they included that direction of the site plan.
Okay, I will return the chair to you, Mayor Morgan, and Counselor Lehman had indicated he'd like to be on the speaker's list. Counselor Lehman, go ahead.
Thank you for those comments, Mayor. I just want you to, if you can, put that heritage, we've made that decision on that, so let's talk about addressing our housing shortage. We hear about the housing shortage daily in PEC. We hear it when delegations address us, when there's intensity and infill being done in the neighborhoods, even though they might not support it, what they always start up with is, I agree there's a need for housing, and then we hear their concerns. We heard all year long about the effects of urban sprawl, as we've spoken about our urban growth boundary. How do we mitigate that? Well, with density and infill. Challenge has been, in my opinion, when we have done infill, it's neighboring, it's neighborhoods that are around the development, proposed development lot, rightly so. It changes the nature of the neighborhoods in many cases. In this particular one, there's no concerns in that front. As the mayor said, it's surrounded by a car dealership, a railroad track. The concern is, and I've heard from folks in the area, beside the heritage, there was concern about heritage, but the traffic. And I just want to address the traffic in this particular case. There are 35,000 cars that use Hyde Park daily. This will provide housing for 500 people, assuming they use their car every day, which I'm hoping they don't, because literally on the other side of the dealership is a commercial plaza with a grocery store, Tim Hortons, et cetera, and they are within a walk to Hyde Park Village. I think this is an opportunity for us to provide a good infill project, provide 500 folks with much-needed housing that they wouldn't have before this is built. And I will close with my remarks on heritage. I did speak with the developer, and I'm glad Counselor Aman spoke with them as well, and we expressed the concerns of heritage. And I will, not only were they accepting the need for that, they were quite frankly embracing that. I think they want to make an exciting project with great reference to the existing building and the surrounding area, and providing information on why those things are important as well, which people might not know, just traveling past, as I do daily. So I hope you support this. It's an opportunity for us to get much-needed housing in an infill area that is really appropriate.
Other speakers. Counselor Trosaw, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you. Not surprisingly, I'm going to not support this application. Do we have any, from staff, do we have any indication that it's the intention of the developer to put in any type or form of lower-income or affordable housing?
Go ahead.
Through you, Worship, there's no indication about any kind of affordable housing or other type of low-rent housing.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, I didn't think so, but I needed to get that on the table, because I have heard the word affordability thrown out throughout these discussions. Creating more units that are high-end, luxury, above-market, or at-market doesn't really address the need for affordable housing. And every time we approve such an infill project without some type of device, and they're hard to come by these days, thanks to the province, there's an opportunity cost. The opportunity cost is there's just so much land, there's just so much land we can build on. And the opportunity cost here is, once they put in this high-end, luxury, market rate, whatever you want to call it, housing.
What's the point of, is it order or personal privilege?
Personal, either.
Well, make, pick one, because I want to rule on it.
Point of order.
One, no, Counselor Trosaw, colleagues can call the point of order. Okay. I'll listen to the point of order, I need the mic, Counselor Trosaw. Go ahead.
The counselor made a point to our staff about, is there a mention of affordable housing? But he's making these claims that this is going to be high-end rent. There's no, I think that's a basis.
So I'm going to stop you. I've said this before at council, there's no mechanism in their procedural bylaw, a counselor can say something, whether you think it's factual or not, that's what the debate is for. I'm not the arbiter, nor as the procedural bylaw, nor are we, whether or not a counselor's statements are accurate and to what degree they are, but in the debate, someone can stand up and refute what a counselor is saying. Like, that's the function of debate. But if I were to be the arbiter of what is factual or not and interject on that, we would be having very long meetings, and I would be, I would not be able to talk, because I'd be jumping in more often than I like. So counselor is making some points. If someone disagrees with that, I would encourage them to stand up and refute the counselor's points in a respectful and articulate debate. So I'll say that isn't a point of order, and the counselor can proceed with his comments.
My other objection to this is that we can look in isolation, and I've raised this before, with respect to many other applications that I've opposed. We are not doing a cumulative, area-wide, traffic study. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're doing is, we're looking at this particular building, and we're saying, oh, it's only going to be, it's only going to be 500 units, and that's not going to appreciably change the traffic flow. What we're not doing is looking at our current capacity, our current LTC capacity, our current capacity for people to enjoy other aspects of the mass mobility plan as it's shifting. It's just this particular building, we do that every time. Finally, I just want to, I want to say that I don't think, and I want to use the precise words here, so I'm going to look at my notes, I don't think this requested amendment is appropriate within the existing planning context. I don't think the requested amendment satisfies the criteria for adoption. I think this is yet another example of, let's build as many units as we can, because let's face it, we have a provincial policy target, and we want to make that. But at the same time, every time, every time we approve building something without some affordability component, and again, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but I have, there is no evidence in this record that indicates there is going to be any aspect of affordability at all. So let me just ask one final question, if I have time. Should we pass this tonight? And should the laws on affordability change? Or should the laws on bonusing change, the saying you can bring back bonusing, or you can have some requirement of a set aside? If those laws change, can we then change the parameters of this project, or are we locked into what we passed tonight?
So I'll let staff answer that.
Through you, Worship, it very much depends on the laws that are changed and any kind of programs that might be available, but like with any of our rezonings, like you need to take it very seriously that you're providing for approvals to allow housing to move forward in this area, so be very conscious of that. And if there's other programs that come available that allow for funding or being able to provide those opportunities, that could come out in the future, but today you're really making those decisions on the number of units and what you want to have happen on this site.
Counselor Trosaw.
Thank you. Is there any requirement that should this be approved, the applicant would be required to perfect what needs to be done on the land and pull building permits within any period of time?
Go ahead, Mr. Maythers.
Through you, Worship, no, there isn't any mandated time that they'd have to come back in for building permits. It would be up to the applicant to bring that forward.
Counselor Trosaw, go ahead.
So am I correct, thank you, through the chair, am I correct in saying that if the applicant so choose, chose, they can sit on this indefinitely?
Mr. Maythers.
Through the chair, yes, that's correct. There's no way to require them to come in in a certain time period.
Okay, Counselor, you have about 30 seconds left.
And finally, and finally, is there any mechanism to ensure that the conditions be complied with and meaningful heritage protections be given after this is approved? Or is it something we're just going to ask, and they can say yes, or they could say no?
Mr. Maythers.
Through your worship, so the way the language is phrased just speaks to the site plan authority. So this is something that very commonly is added, to be able to allow some authority for the site plan approval, to be able to have that discussion and that back-and-forth with the owner. We understand that the owner is willing to do some of this work, and that's why, from my understanding as well, why this was brought forward at committee. So there's no necessary way to mandate it if it's not something that is a requirement. But it very commonly, we will have some good conversations, and that will be included in the site plan. But as mentioned, it's not a requirement, but very commonly, we are able to come to an agreement with the owner.
Well, thank you. That covers many of my objections, and I'm out of time. And I thank you for the discussion we've had on this. So again, I'll be, I can't support this.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor Pripel next.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment that I will be supporting this. And I know there were, during the last few years, we've been hearing, you know, how many affordable, deep affordable units. And some of them, just like this developer, there is no specific number. But I'm a true believer in the supply and demand economic model, and we already see it, what we have done as a council, for example, in the era of downtown, and the supply and demand, the supply has caught up, and we already see the decreases in the rents that are currently happening. Is it at the level that we would still want it, or is it really kind of affordable for everyone? No, it's not. But there are already, we already see downtown, 10, some of them up to 20% decrease. And why? It's not because the developers committed deep affordable units, it's because of supply and demand. And this project that's in front of us, in my eyes, belongs to this area of supply and demand. Thank you.
Okay, that is all the speakers I have on the speakers list, except for Counselor Rahman. Go ahead.
Thank you, and through you. So I just wanted to ask staff a question based on some of the language that they put in the report around the alternatives that they tried to carve out for a path to approval. On page 339, they state that, given the context and location of the subject land, staffer of the opinion that an alternative development with a max height of eight stories could be supported through a zoning bylaw amendment. In that, they also provide some thoughts around the setback from the abutting automobile body shop. And I just want to know if what they're saying is, at the eight stories, that it's viable to do so with the setback, but at the 15, it's not?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. In terms of what staff had recommended, we were looking at it purposely for, in terms of lighting and whatnot. However, it would apply for both.
Go ahead.
Thank you, and through you. No, I appreciate that context. So I've looked at this application in many different ways, and looking at it as a viable application for the area. I'm prepared to support A and C, but not prepared to support B at this time, which is the zoning change. And my reason for doing so is I do think that had the amendment included less height, had it not had as much impact on the local area, I would have been more supportive. But at this time, I think that, for me, I can't get behind all aspects of the application. I appreciate the conversations I've had with the developer, but knowing this area, having walked this area, and having been in the surrounding area, even looking at the traffic study, I have concerns around the amount and the intensification, sorry, in this area and the amount of housing that we're adding. I appreciate that the developer's thinking outside the box, and I appreciate that they brought forward the idea of live-work units as well. I'm still trying to wrap my head around what a live-work unit looks like. They gave me some ideas of where to look at to get a better sense of what those may be like. But I can tell you, there are businesses that surround this area that create added complexities. There is the railway tracks, there is the automobile shop, there is the hardware, building supply, sorry, stores across the road. And then there's just contending with the traffic on Hyde Park. And all of those things are, I think, create a lot of challenges. And I'm sure that the developer, you know, can reassure us that there is a way around those. But for that reason, I want to express, I would have supported less height here, but I won't support it as this is laid out. However, I do appreciate the constructive conversation I've had with the developer. I plan to continue to work to support the community's desire, if this were to move forward, to see more heritage recognition in this area. I don't think that the STANTEC report and what was provided, and it goes far enough for recognition, so I do hope that the developer continues other ways to recognize the significance of this building on this particular piece of land.
Okay. Other speakers? We'll separate B for Counselor Rahman, and we'll do B first, so then we can do everything else altogether. Okay, if there's no other speakers, then what I'm going to do is I'm going to proceed with part B first, and then that'll be followed by all the remaining items. Okay? So we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 4.
Okay, and now all the remaining clauses. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 10 to 5.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you. The last item is 13. Counselor Hopkins has requested this to be pulled, is dealing with 3563 Bostwick Road.
Okay, that's put on the floor by the chair. Counselor Hopkins, did you want to speak to it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I, first of all, want to start off with thanking staff and the applicant. There have been many, many revisions in this application. And I know a lot of thought and a lot of work went into this application, but I would like to be consistent with some of my voting on applications in this area, that we have seen intensification, the amount of units increasing, it's become a snowball effect. And my concerns continue to be, how is this all going to work? How are we creating a community where we want people to live in? I am not convinced that we're there. And we're going to see more applications coming forward. So my concerns still remain, how do we even try to move around? Right now, we just have concepts of how this application and other applications are going to be, but we really don't understand how everything is going to be integrated and work together. The other concern that continues to come up with these applications is the natural heritage, and how do we deal with it? Yes, it will be looked at through the site plan, but this is a very naturally enriched area, and I think it's really important, when we just approve these applications, that we really try to understand the green space, the community space, the amenity space, not only with this application, but with other applications that we have approved past number of years, and that we will continue to see applications coming forward. So I would like to be on record as not supporting this application.
Okay, any other speakers to this one? Seeing none, then we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 2.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes the 17th Report of the Planning and Environment Committee.
Counselor Plosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move a 10-minute bio break.
Counselor Plosa wants to move a 10-minute break. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Counselor Ferrin. Okay, we're going to do this by hand. Just keep them up. All those in favor? And those opposed? Okay.
Motion carries.
Okay, 10 minutes. All right, we'll see you back in 10 minutes. All right, we'll see you back in 10 minutes. Okay, please be seated. We're going to proceed with the next committee report. That's SPPC. I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Lewis to present the report.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have been asked to pull 2.1, the STRAP Plan Implementation, 5, the Consideration of Appointment to Western Board of Governors, and 7, the Elect Respect Campaign, and, sorry, and 8, the Membership in the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. So those requests are the ones I've received. I'm not sure if anyone wants anything else dealt with separately.
Anybody else want anything dealt with separately? Okay. Seeing none, then go ahead.
Okay, so I will move 1, 3, 4, 6. That was consent.
Yes. 1, 3, 4, and 6. That's on the floor by the Chair. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
I will now put Item 2 on the floor. This is 2.1, the Strategic Plan Implementation Update. Counsel Stevenson requested this be pulled so she could be consistent with her votes. I'm not sure if there's anything else that anyone wants to speak to on that, but I'll turn it over to you, Chair.
Okay, yeah, that's separate. I'll look to see if there's any speakers. Go ahead, Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you. Yes, I did pull it to be consistent with my vote and vote against it. I just did want to highlight, like, one of the issues that I have is how we set out our strategies and then staff come up with how those are actioned, and we never have any input into that, nor do we approve them. It's, we hand it off at that point. So for instance, 4.3 was increased commercial occupancy in the core area. We came up with four strategies: finalize and implement core area vacancy reduction strategy, promote the current supply of available space in the core area to attract new businesses, increase awareness of the city's core area, community improvement plan incentives, and explore and implement strategies to support the retention of existing businesses. And all of those are complete with the Downtown Master Plan, which, you know, we're not going to see until next year. So I just feel like it would have been, going forward, I hope, as we implement changes, that Council has some input into how the strategies are actioned.
Okay. Any other speakers? Seeing, no, go ahead, Counsel Preble.
Thanks. I just want to add, I'll be certainly voting yes to accept it. There's no doubt that there's room for improvement. We did talk about it during Standing Committee meeting and during our Audit Committee meeting, and I do believe that there is an understanding, there's an understanding on improved certain areas, but I do believe we are on the right track and we are going to get there, and we just have to make sure we get there rather sooner than later. Thank you.
Okay. Any other speakers? If not, we'll open that for voting.
Second call, Counsel Ferrer. Marking the Counsel absent, closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 1.
And Chair, I will now put Item 5. This is 4.2 from the Committee Agenda, the Consideration of Appointments to the Western University Board of Governors, on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look for any speakers. Go ahead, Counsel Trosaw.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'll be exceptionally brief since I've already spoken to my objections to this on a few occasions. It's not about the two people. I think they're both very qualified to be on the board. My objection is not giving the community the opportunity to submit applications for these positions. You know, we don't really get a lot of opportunity to have any, any input into the operation of the Board of Governors. It's a black box. Having served on that board for four years, I can tell you that most of what they do is in closed session. The information function of being able to get reports is very important. And I know I'm going to lose this vote. My prediction, if I had to make a prediction, would be it'll be 14 to 1, and I know that. But I'm rising to talk about this again because we need a better mechanism to be able to bring the concerns of the London community to this board, and we don't do that. I would call on the mayor, in all due respect, who sits on the board as an ex officio member, to maybe, once in a while, bring more information back, if not to the whole Council, to those segments of Council who are very interested in it. I can tell you, as the Ward 6 Counselor, which is the area that surrounds the university, my ward has some very, very specific and local concerns about some of the activities of the university, and I find it is very difficult to get into that black box. So in closing, I just want to say, you know, I understand these are two very qualified representatives. I should say that the university has extra seats. They have four extra seats. Each year, they appoint another person. They well could have appointed one of the two this year, and they well could have appointed the next one next year. But no, they're going to, they're going to hold on to their, to their appointments, and we're going to say, no thanks, we don't need it, we're good. And for me, that's not okay, and it's a question of public accountability, and it's a question of public transparency. So I'll be voting no, but understand what my motivations are for voting no. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm going to hand the Chair over to Counsel Ramon, and I'm putting myself on the list.
Thank you. I have the Chair. I'll go to the mayor.
So I'm going to support the recommendation on the Counselor's desire to call on me to provide a report on behalf of Western University. I'm not going to do that. I'm not the spokesperson for the board. Many of us serve on boards, and we're not the spokesperson for them. From time to time, I may have information that I can share, but I think as many boards can. I'm certainly happy to pass along the desire for municipal councils perhaps have a visit from Western University to have a discussion, and it would be up to their board and leadership to do that. But I'm not going to suggest that I'm going to put myself in a position to speak on behalf of a board that I am not the spokesperson for. So I'll support the motion before us. I just wanted to rise for a moment and respond to the Counselor, though.
Thank you. Returning the Chair to you with no one on the speakers list.
Counsel Preble.
Thank you. I will be supporting what's in front of us as well, having said that what was mentioned here by Counsel Trosaw, I do think he has some valid points. And again, having said that these two are city's reappointments, and I did have a chance to talk to the Chair of the Board of Governors from Western, and they certainly both, and it was already stated here as well, that both are stellar candidates. And I just don't want to send a signal, if these are city reappointments, that we would be changing our mind, and I do believe if they have been appointed, it should be directly associated with their performance, which, again, we are hearing it's stellar. And, but on the other hand, if they weren't reappointments, if it was the first one, I do think that there are certainly some valid points that were mentioned to be considered. But based on the current circumstances, I will very much support the motion that's in front of us. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the speakers I have on this. So with that, I'm going to open the recommendation for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will now put Item 7, 4.4, from your Committee Agenda, the Request for Support for Elect Respect Campaign from AMO, brought forward by Counsel Hopkins and yourself. I voted contrary. I wasn't going to pull this, but another member of Council has indicated they are interested in changing their vote, so it's been pulled.
Okay. You're still willing to put it on the floor even though you're going to, yeah, okay, great. All right, so is there any speakers to this then? No? Okay, then we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 2.
Go ahead.
And I will put Item 8. This is 4.4 from your Committee Agenda, Request for Support for Membership in the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, brought forward by Mayor Morgan.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look to see if there's any discussion. Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1.
Go ahead.
And that completes the 14th report of SPPC.
Great, thank you very much. We'll go to the 17th Report of Infrastructure and Corporate Services Committee. I'll go to Chair Ramon.
Thank you. I would like to move Items 1 through, oh, sorry, I'm first speaking, but the 17th Report of the Infrastructure and Corporate Services Committee. I have not been asked to pull any items at this time, but I'll look to see if there's any.
All right, anybody like anything dealt with separately? No? Okay.
Okay, seeing none, I will look to put Items 1 through 7 on the floor.
Excellent. Those are on the floor. Moved by the Chair. Any discussion on them? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
That completes my report.
Okay, that means we're on to added reports. There is added report from closed session, which Counsel Ramon will also present, so I'll let you present that report.
Thank you. Your Council in Closed Session Report includes Item 1, Lease Extension and Amending Agreement 785 Wonderland Road South, that on the recommendation of the Deputy City Manager Finance Supports with the concurrence of the Deputy City Manager's Social and Health Development on the advice of the Director Realty Services with respect to the lease extension by way of extension letter is attached in Appendix A for a term beginning November 1st, 2026, expiring on October 31st, 2031, for the office space located at 785 Wonderland Road South, known as West Mount Shopping Center. The following actions be taken: a) the extension of the city's current lease at 785 Wonderland Road for a further term of five years, beginning on November 1st, 2026, and expiring on October 31st, 2031, be approved in accordance with the extension letter attached in Appendix A; b) the mayor and city clerk be authorized to extend, sorry, to execute the extension letter; and c) the civic administration be authorized to undertake all administrative steps necessary in connection with this lease agreement, extension, sorry, to, uniform tentative agreement that on the recommendation of the Deputy City Manager Enterprise Supports with the concurrence of the Deputy City Manager Finance Support and the Deputy City Manager's Social and Health Development. The attached memorandum of agreement dated October 23rd, 2025, and the, and agreed to item sign September 12th, 2025, concurring the 2025 to 2028 collective agreement for the uniform local 302B ratified. And lastly, that progress is made with respect to Items 4.1, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, as noted on the public agenda.
Okay, those are presented by Counsel Ramon. Any discussion on those? Yes, Counsel Van Meurbruggen, go ahead. Oh, could you just, this weekend rise, it's the Council.
Is it possible to call 4.4 on the Council agendas separately at this point?
There's no vote on 4.4, it's just indication of progress.
We're just voting, so at this point, we're just voting to receive?
No, we're voting on the two items that have been pulled out of camera. One is the extension of the lease at West Mount Wall for the city's space there. One is the extension of the lease at West Mount Mall for the city's space there. And the other is the ratification of the uniform agreement. Those are the two things we're voting on.
4.4 is not on the floor.
It's not. It's just an indication that we've made progress on that.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So we'll do those both together then, and we'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you, Counsel Ramon. Bird matters. There are none inquiries? I don't think anybody indicated they had an inquiry. Okay. Seeing none. Emergent motions, there are none. So we're on to bylaws. All right. Here's how we're going to do these. First, we're going to do 405, which is the, the electric scooters and cargo power bikes, which is the one with the new date in it. Then we're going to do 408, which is the Gleason's Creek Housing Cooperative item. Then we're going to do 412 and 426, which is 1269 Hyde Park Road. Then we're going to do 415 and 428, which is the Bostwick items. And then we'll do everything else, if that sounds good for everyone. Okay? Yeah? Great. Okay. So we'll start with, first I'll ask, is there anybody who kind of agreed with all of those things? Okay. Counsel McAllister and Counsel Cuddy willing to do it all. All right. You'll be the mover and seconder for all of them. We're going to start with Bill 405 in first reading, moved by Counsel McAllister, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. We'll open that for voting.
Sorry, Your Worship. Just before the clerk changes the vote, I just need to change mine.
Okay. We'll just hold off. This is east, this is electric kick scooters and cargo bikes, cargo powered bicycles. Everybody's, yeah, it looks like everybody's going.
Counsel Van Meurbruggen. Closing the vote. Motion carries 9 to 5.
Okay. Second reading. Same mover and seconder. Any debate on second reading? I see none. Okay. We'll open second reading for voting.
Motion carries 9 to 5.
And third and final reading. Same mover and seconder. We'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 9 to 5.
Okay. On to Bill 408, which is Gleason's Creek Housing Cooperative. We'll use the same mover and seconder. Counsel McAllister and Counsel Cuddy will open first reading for voting.
Motion carries 13 to 1.
All right. Second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open second reading for voting.
Motion carries 13 to 1.
Okay. Third and final reading. Same mover and seconder. We'll open third reading for voting.
Motion carries 13 to 1.
Okay. We're on to bills 412 and 426. This is 1269 Hyde Park Road. We use the same mover and seconder. We're going to open that for voting, for first reading.
Motion carries 10 to 4.
And second reading of this. Same mover and seconder. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 10 to 4.
And third and final reading. Same mover and seconder. We'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 10 to 4.
Okay. Now bills 415 and 428. These are the Bostwick ones. So first reading is going to be open for voting. Same mover and seconder. We'll open it now.
Motion carries 12 to 2.
And second reading of these two bills. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 12 to 2.
And third and final reading of these with the same mover and seconder. We'll open third reading for voting.
Motion carries 12 to 2.
Okay. Now, all the remaining bills altogether. We have Counsel McAllister moving and Counsel Cuddy seconding it. We'll open first reading of the remaining bills for voting.
Motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay. And second reading of the remaining bills. Same mover and seconder. We'll open, any discussion? Seeing none, second reading will open for voting.
Motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay. Third and final reading of this set of bills. Same mover and seconder. We'll open third reading for voting.
Motion carries 14 to 0.
All right. That's it for bylaws. So we just need a motion to adjourn. Counsel Van Meurbruggen, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. We'll do this by hand. All those in favor of adjournment?
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.